Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call to order the Lake Havasu City Budget and CIP Overview Work Session on Thursday, April 21, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. If you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with its redeemed and justice for all.
Thank you. And Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jim Dolan.
Good morning, Kelly. I am here.
And Mayor Kalshihi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item four, what we're here to do is the budget overview. So we'll have a presentation, discussion, and potential direction to staff on the budget for the fiscal year '21-'22 year-end estimates, as well as the fiscal year 2022-23 annual budget and the five-year capital improvement plan. I don't know, Mr. Knutson, if you want to introduce that?
Sure. Yeah, good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Thank you for that. After several months of hard work by the city team throughout all the different departments and up and down through the organization, we are here to present to the Council the capital improvement plan, proposed capital improvement plan for, that would start going to effect July 1 of 2022. And there are several funds that we'll be discussing, including our general fund and our enterprise funds and other special funds that we have. The presentation will be led by Jill Olson and Dan Sloan. Jill will give her expertise from the budget perspective and the finance within our parameters of our resources that we have. Dan will discuss in detail some of the projects that are planned, that are ongoing, and maybe even some of the projects that didn't quite hit the list. The CIP itself is fully funded. That is one, which means that we have identified revenues over the course of next year and the four years, four subsequent years, to fully fund the projects that are identified within the CIP. Now, of course, fuel costs, this supply chain economy, all the issues that we're dealing with, with HVAC systems and metals and concrete and raw materials and all that stuff does have an impact. We're doing our best to try to identify what that looks like now, but we'll have to come back and continue to massage the timeline and the plan for completion as we get through that point. That being said, as far as being fully funded, that means some projects that were requested by the departments aren't on the list because they didn't fall within the financial parameters. There will be a little bit of tension that we'll talk about a little bit here this morning, and we'll come back and talk about it again at our next budget work session, and that's dealing directly with our water fund. We are in trouble in terms of where we're at for the projects that are identified based on the resources that we have. And going into year five, we are in the red. So, but we cannot now cut the projects. We cannot now cut the resources that are needed for operations, for personnel, for ongoing equipment. So that plan will be presented to Council with the thought or the idea that we'll come back later this year and take a look at what it's going to need to fully fund the water fund. As you recall, the IDD sunsets, this is the last year, July 1, 2022, here in a couple of months, there will be no more IDD. And the rates that were proposed to increase to bring, to offset the funding for that $5.7 million that was collected by the city through property tax to fund the water fund will no longer be there. So we'll have the 15% was the increase this year. The proposal was for subsequent increases to get us to that $5.7 million mark. With that not on the horizon as of right now, we'll have to discuss that in a few months in terms of the funding for the water fund. So just want to touch on that a little bit, and then I'll turn it over to Jill and Dan to talk about some better news and some projects that are in the hopper.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Olson?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. We are going to start kind of going with an overview of what we're going to be discussing today, many things of which Mr. Knutson referenced. We'll talk about how we think we're doing this year for '21-'22, how we think we'll end as of June 30. We'll look at available resources, or sometimes referred to as fund balance. And then we'll look at the, kind of just an overview of what we anticipate for fiscal year '23. We'll look at the capital improvement plan, and then we'll have council discussion and questions and input from the public as well. For the budget process, it is at least a 10-month process for staff, and so a lot of work has gone into the numbers that we're presenting. You have received your small little booklet that has the capital improvement plan. That's the proposed CIP at this time. The detailed project sheets are included within that. And then at your May work session, you'll be receiving more details related to the overall budget, kind of the operations, the five-year projections for all funds, and we'll talk about revenue expenditure highlights and departmental budgets at that time. So this fiscal year, how are we doing? This reflects the budget, the amount that was budgeted compared to what we're now estimating for June 30, June 30 of '22. So for each of the funds listed, you'll see we have three fund types, and then we have the individual funds listed beneath those fund types. The first column shows the budgeted revenues. The next column shows what staff is estimating the revenues to be by June 30, and then what we're, what we budgeted for expenditures, and finally, the estimated amount that staff is looking at for June 30 of '22. So the general fund revenues reflect the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds. At the time we did the budget, we thought we were getting more than what we actually ended up getting, so this reflects half a year of like $6.7 million rather than the $4.25 million that it ended up being. So in the expenditure side, since we just recently, well, in January, received the specific rules related to how we can spend those ARPA monies, we have not included any expenditures for this fiscal year, so all of those funds will be carried forward until, into the next fiscal year. We had grants in the revenue side that were over $14 million, so that's one of the reasons that revenues are what they are. The estimated actual expenditures are lower than what we budgeted, mostly due to a lot of lack, grant funds that didn't materialize, therefore we're not spending the grants. We have vacancy savings at a higher level than what we anticipated due to our recruitment difficulties that we're having right now, and then some of the supply receipt issues. Items that we would normally receive by June 30, it's, we're getting word now that those items, many of the bigger items, capital, equipment items, will not be received by June 30, so we're having to carry that money into the next fiscal year budget. So that's why those all contribute to the estimated actual expenses coming in less than what the budgeted expenses were. And then again, we show, if you look at estimated actual, especially on the, or even budgeted revenues over budgeted expenses, you'll see that some, the expenses are higher than the budgeted revenues, and that's due to those carryforward issues. So with the modified accrual basis of accounting that we're required to use for many of our funds, except for the enterprise funds, they use full accrual, the carryforward are those funds that cannot be spent by June 30, and we cannot count them as June 30 '22 expenditures unless that service or supply was actually received by June 30 of '22. Doesn't matter when we bill, get billed for it, doesn't matter when we pay for it. If the item or the service was not received by June 30, we have to carry that forward. We can't count it as a June 30 '22 fiscal year item. So hopefully that'll explain carryforwards because they do, carryforwards tend to skew the numbers and make it harder to make an apples-and-apples comparison. This table reflects the staff estimates for revenues and expenditures for the current year, showing the effect on fund balances or available resources. And again, for the general fund, the revenues include the ARPA money at that time of $6.7 million. One thing to note, that the budget stabilization reserve, which is the reserve that we keep in a few of our funds, the general fund has a budget stabilization reserve, water fund and sewer fund have those, I believe HERF even has a reserve, those are excluded from these balances. So those have already been set aside prior to showing these items. So in this worksheet, you'll see that we start with available resources or the fund balance. Then we add the estimated revenue, we subtract the estimated expenditures, all of, as of June 30 '22, to show what our new estimated available resources are going to be. So you'll see in the general fund, the available resources are higher than what we started with at July 1 of '21, and that's mainly due to all of those carryforward items. So now we'll take a look at some of the assumptions that we have been considering as we've been estimating next year's budget. For revenues, we're still reviewing projections for revenues and expenditures, both. Cost savings, we're going to closely monitor all expenses as well. Revenue adjustments, adjustments, particularly in sales taxes, we will adjust as, if we get new information that changes our estimates in a material manner, we will keep adjusting those numbers as, to as late as we can, so that we've got the most updated projections in there based upon what's happening now. Because what we're estimating for this fiscal year becomes the base for the projection of next fiscal year. So for projected revenues, in the general fund, we have included the ARPA funds for FY '22 being carried forward, $4.25 million. The total, because, because we'll receive our second half in this next fiscal year, so the total ARPA funds will be $8.5 million when you add the two together. Property tax, we're holding the rate flat, as we've done in the recent past. The rate will remain at .6718 per $100 of assessed value. So the tax levy is just under $6 million. Therefore, the net, kind of the additional revenue for the fiscal year will be about $388,000 in the property tax revenue line item. A portion of that is just due to new construction, and so the only amount, additional amount that we're receiving due to increases anticipated for assessed value is the $248,000 increase by applying the current rate to the new assessed value information, numbers that we receive from the county. If there were any legislative impacts related to what happens at the state level and how that gets passed on down to us, sometimes we have costs that we didn't necessarily plan for. For those that are known, those have been included in the budget. In fiscal year '24 in particular, that was a year where we had the state shared income tax decrease, so beginning next fiscal year, or in FY '24, year one, we're going to lose, right now, we'll lose about $290,000 starting for that year, and it'll, that number grows as time goes by. For water and wastewater funds, the utility rate study results have been implemented for the most part. There have been some changes, which council is aware of. You've made a change, especially on the wastewater side, last fall. They've been implemented, but the study proposed annual increases for water and wastewater that we did not include since council is still discussing what they want to do, what you want to do with those rates. So those rates show only changes in consumption, not changes or increases in actual rates at this time. On the expenditure side, once we understand what we believe will be available in the form of revenues in order to provide services, we then look to our current service levels and any directives by council to determine what our expenditure should be. Some of the assumptions made on the expenditure side, for now, we've included a step increase as applicable by person and by fund, a cost of living adjustment of 3%. There has been an increase, or there will be an increase to the retirement rates in PSPRS that has been reflected in our numbers for FY '23. We've included cost increases in fuel. We've included them in our estimated actual numbers for June 30 '22, and we've carried some fuel increases into next fiscal year as well. In addition to fuel, we've also included increases in costs for materials and chemicals, metals, and all those items that have been impacted by inflation and supply issues. We have included an increase in health insurance of approximately 7.5%. The general fund contingency is remaining, we put it in for $1 million for next year, which is what it has been for the last few fiscal years. And then we do, we've included salary savings initially, at least, it's a very conservative number of $575,000 in the general fund. Right now, if recruitment efforts continue, if we're having difficulties with recruitment, that number, of course, would be greater. Okay, so Dan is going to provide some details related to the capital improvement plan that is being proposed to council.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Let me first say that it takes a team to put together this CIP. Thank you to all the employees who contributed their knowledge and the department heads for their careful analysis of the operations and the needs of the community. A special thank you to Jill and Angie with Finance, Engineering Division, and all the department staff that helped put together this CIP and this information today. I will take the lead in reviewing existing and future capital projects from a global perspective. If you have detailed questions about any project, we are prepared to answer questions about the projects that are presented today. You should have a book in front of you that includes the full five-year CIP projects. There are projects proposed for the water and wastewater that are considered to be immediate needs for the coming fiscal year. Staff has reviewed projections of available revenue and fund balance and have carefully considered the timing of all projects. I'll present a short recap of the current fiscal year, fiscal '22 projects. As you can see on the screen, this is a list of the projects that were approved in this current fiscal year budget. I'll give a few highlights of some of the projects that were completed this year. The taxiway alpha pavement project, which replaced 8,000 linear feet of asphalt on the taxiway and runway connectors at the airport. The infill, infield erosion control project between the taxiway and runway will also get completed this year. Both Havasu by Wash and Avalon Drain had significant improvements to the areas that had severe erosion. Soil cement, drop structures, and grade control features were installed to limit future erosion. As you guys are aware, paving McCulloch Boulevard was completed, approximately half-mile of new pavement in downtown. And the exploratory well drilling and backup water supply project is almost at the conclusion of a nearly five-year project that will provide critical backup water supply for the city. This project included identifying backup well locations, well design and drilling, and completion of the well facilities, infrastructure, and piping to connect to the water treatment plant. Before we get into the details of the fiscal '23 through '27 plan, Jill will provide a brief overview of the CIP finances.
So as mentioned by Mr. Knutson, we have a balanced and funded five-year plan, except for the water fund. We have reduced and removed CIP projects for water fund and wastewater at this point in order to fit within our available resources that we projected. But the 50-year of the water fund, we're kind of doing our best to spread out some of the fund balance and use that as needed for the CIP projects, but we're still just a little bit short in year five right now with the current water fund balances. So as I mentioned, rate increases have not been approved by you, so revenues have been estimated to be fairly flat, and that has caused a shortfall for essential water projects. We have hundreds of millions of dollars of water and wastewater infrastructure in the city, and CIP is a mechanism we use to continue our investment in these facilities in order to provide safe and reliable utility services, both on the water and sewer side. However, having a balanced and funded five-year CIP, by having that, critical projects had to be removed that still need to be completed, so these projects will be discussed more in detail when we get to the CIP section, and Dan will cover those. An increase in funding levels is needed to provide the resources required to properly maintain our water and wastewater infrastructure. Again, as we did in prior years, construction sales tax was used as the measurement or of the dedicated funding stream from the general fund to the CIP, using one-time revenues for one-time projects, and right now, that's at about $3 million a year. And then for FY '23, staff is proposing that 25% of the general fund's vehicle license tax, which ends up, that 25% is about $1 million, also be dedicated to, as a funding stream for the CIP highway user revenue fund projects. And currently, staff recommends no issuance of debt in order to fund any of the items in the CIP. This is just a graph that reflects the breakdown of the five-year CIP by city service. More than half the CIP, as you can see, is used for water and wastewater projects. Drainage projects, which are improvements to our washes and drains, are funded by the flood control district dollars that we receive, which is about $2.5 million per year. And then grant funding is large, mainly because of the proposed airport grants that we receive and anticipate receiving. HERF on the CIP side is fairly small because most of the HERF budget is required just to cover the operating expenditures, the ongoing expenses and equipment in the operating, on the operating budget side. So now we'll turn it back over to Dan to take a closer look at the FY '23 projects. Back to you, Dan.
Thank you, Jill. So as you can see on this slide, these are the current, or these are the projects for fiscal '23. The next three slides, I kind of want to go over real quick and highlight the new ones that have been added. You see, it's more than half of what is just in this next fiscal year. And then we'll go over and buy fund, and we'll get a lot more detail on each project. So just looking at this list, you can see the replacement of the AWAS system at the airport, wash crossing improvements is a new project that's been added. Well, he can drive flood control, a city fueling facility, and the Bridgewater channel dredging are all new projects. Continuing along with that, this sheet, the police facility and jail rehab project is new, and I'll talk about that a little bit later with the grant funding. Dixamp Park pickleball courts, repair of the London Bridge piers, and a 2023 pavement replacement project, the Vados well design and expansion, which I'll get into a little bit more later, Mulberry Treatment Plant Aeration Basin Repair, and Park Avenue Lift Station, the design of the renovation of that lift station. And on this sheet, it shows the North End Wastewater System Expansion is a new project, the 2023 pipeline rehab and replacement on the wastewater side, North Havasu Additional Tank and Distribution Line, the Horizontal Collector Well Redevelopment, North Well Field Improvements, and backup water supply. So you can see a lot of new projects have been added to the next year's CIP, and with that, total comes to about $46 million for next year. And so now we'll go in a little bit more detail by funding source, starting with the airport. Of the 21 million of projects planned for the airport over the next five years, one of the most important, of course, is the runway replacement. This project will address the safety issues associated with the current failing asphalt. Also, based on a low pavement condition index, the parking apron is due for replacement of asphalt starting in fiscal year '25. And with airport projects, these are dependent on grant funding from both FAA and ADOT. Typically, the city match is 4.9%, depending on the type of grant we receive. And moving on to the HERF, I'm sorry, not HERF drainage funds, as you can see from the project list, we will continue to make improvements to the washes and drains throughout the city. New this year, though, is that we will also be, start working on some road wash crossings that have been identified as priorities due to safety concerns. So that's something new that we've added into the drainage projects for this year. And some of them will start in the fiscal '23, as you can see from the slide. So total for drainage projects for the five years is about $18 million. And moving on to the general fund, there are a few projects in here that you're aware of, obviously, the city, the new city courthouse that we're working on. The construction is programmed to be completed in fiscal '23, with move-in later in fiscal '24. Estimates of the total, which you're seeing, $8.5 million. There was about $3 million for the property purchase, half a million this current fiscal year for the design process, and then $4.9 million for construction in fiscal '23. The city fuel facility is another new project that we've added, and this is to consolidate fueling within the city fleet vehicles and equipment into two central locations, one near City Hall and one down at the Public Works Maintenance Yard. And then also, due to safety concerns at the Bridgewater Channel, we've added a dredging project that we undertaken over the next two years. The project will be separated into two phases to allow the south-end panel dredging to improve traffic flow at the south end to be done this current, or next fiscal year with the removal of sediment from the wash areas the following fiscal year. And so total for the general fund over the five years is about $12.6 million.
Okay, just to interrupt for a moment, just one quick point of clarification. It's the general government projects, but that downtown catalyst is actually that funding that we see there is the ABC funds, not the general fund.
Perfect. Moving on to parks projects, there's a couple on here. The Aquatic Center's been on the CIP for over a year. We've got the design done and plan on constructing that project next year. This is a project that was to address the dehumidification and air conditioning so that that facility could be used during the warmer months. And then due to a very generous community donation, Phase Three of the pickleball will be constructed at Dixamp Memorial Park, which will include an additional four pickleball courts. And so parks is showing about $3.2 million for the five-year CIP. And moving on to public safety, the police facility and jail rehab project was awarded about $1.8 million in grant funding this year. So this will allow us to start the design and phasing process, while currently, we are also applying for an additional $1.9 million in grant funding to complete the remainder of the project. Fire Station 5 is still on the list as it's our oldest station. This project to rebuild the fire station is estimated to cost about $5.8 million and scheduled for fiscal years '25 and '26. And the police facility lobby improvements is a project designed to address accessibility and security issues at the front entrance to the police station. So total public safety in the five-year CIP is about $11.6 million. Moving on to streets, this definitely will probably look a little different than what you've seen in the past. Some of the key projects on here is that we get, the London Bridge is inspected by DOT bridge crew every year, and a few safety-related issues have come up recently. One of them is fixing the bridge pier that is getting flooded with water, and that's Pier D, the second one from the island. And then the other one is to address cracks in the bridge deck that can get into the structure. So we've added those into the, into the CIP. And then what is new in here, you can see the general pavement replacement project, and these are designed so that we can start addressing some of the roads within our town based on, you know, identifying the streets that have the lowest pavement condition index, and also in conjunction with where water and/or wastewater infrastructure may need to be replaced. So that's a new program that we're trying to get ramped up. We're also working on identifying and prioritizing larger road projects if we do get some additional funds. funding for streets. So right now, we're showing about $10, and at $10.3 million for the five-year CIP. And so as Jill mentioned, before I go over the water and wastewater projects, the current rate structure does not allow for the investment in our water and wastewater infrastructure that is required. Although these lists of funded projects look robust, we have had to remove projects or reduce project budgets by approximately $25 million in the five-year CIP. Some of the projects that we have removed or reduced are water and wastewater pipeline replacements, and obviously, starting with the older 50-year-old ACP pipe that we still have in the ground, water reservoir replacements, upgrades to the supervisory control and data acquisition, which is our SCADA system, which controls all of our water and wastewater system, wastewater lift stations, and some of the water booster station improvements have been removed. So it's clear that obviously, an increase in funding levels is needed over the next couple of years to provide the resources required to properly maintain and operate our water and wastewater infrastructure. So now getting into the projects that are funded in this CIP. Very important wastewater project is the Vados well design and expansion project. This will, project will address the disposal of effluent from the wastewater treatment plants, which currently generate approximately 4 million gallons of effluent per day. The North End Wastewater System Expansion Project addresses the lack of wastewater infrastructure in the Victoria Farms area to coincide with proposed developments in that area. It will also address wastewater flow to the North Regional Treatment Plant from the Bombay and IPS lift stations. Continuing on wastewater, the Island Treatment Plant Filter Upgrade Project will replace the existing filter system with biological filters, and this is done to reduce the chemical costs and the maintenance associated with the filters. And as you can see, there's other wastewater projects in the CIP that are put on there to help reduce odors, increase capacity, and/or replace just old equipment that's at the end of its life. So the total for wastewater over the five-year CIP is $29.3 million, and that's reflecting about a $10 to $11 million cut from what we had originally proposed. Moving on to water projects, since I already talked about the exploratory well drilling and backup water supply project, the companion project to that is the redevelopment of the Horizontal Collector Well. And what this will do is return it to the capacity of what it was when it was installed over 20 years ago. And as the city only has one water treatment plant, the backup water treatment plant project includes the initial study to determine the most cost-effective method of providing redundancy for water treatment with the design and construction plan for future years. Improvements to the existing water treatment plant are also programmed for fiscal '24 and '25, and this includes constructing enclosures over the biological filters and cascade aerator to keep dust out of the process, minimize algae, and protect our large investment in equipment at the water treatment plant. You can also see tank and booster station improvements and water main replacements are ongoing improvements to our water distribution system that we program every year when funding is available. And so the total for water on the five-year CIP is about $38.3 million, and that reflects about a $12 to $15 million cut from what we had originally proposed.
So Mayor. That would help. So Mayor and Council, that concludes the formal presentation of the proposed CIP. Staff is available to answer any questions you might have. We'll bring back any changes to the CIP and provide the operating budgets at the May 12th work session for discussion. The adoption of the tentative budget is scheduled for June 14th, with the final budget adoption scheduled for June 28th. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation. Well, I'll open it up for questions or comments from members of the council. Councilmember Moses?
Thanks, Mayor. Real quick, when were the rates supposed to raise again? Was that after, in June? Or was it, because we raised it in August last year, when were those yearly increases supposed to take place?
The first moment, so it went into effect in September.
In September.
On the original plan. Was September. So the discussion that we had at our October 26th meeting was, there's seasonality built into our water wastewater system as far as kind of rate payers, flow, use, and all of that. So we determined with the action we took on October 26th is, we set the rates with no built-in increases at all. So what we have now is just what's going to stay until we have that discussion again. And at that time, we indicated that we would wait, wait a year, so we have full seasonality, and then review what those water rates should be going forward.
But they were supposed, with the original plan brought forth by the consultant, supposed to change again in?
September.
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 Every September, okay. All righty. I mean, I have questions throughout the whole presentation.
Yeah, please.
Do you want to just take the first couple of pages at a time, we all comment on it, or?
No, we'll just start with you, and we'll kind of make our way through, because other councilmembers might have the exact same question you have, and.
Wonderful. I'm on the budget overview, projected expenditures, talking about increases. What percentage of their pay are the step increases? What is that going to account for? Is there a rough estimate? Is it 1%, 2%, 3%?
Yeah, so the step increases are built into the positional analysis that council adopted two years ago now, I believe. And so that's built in on a, it's over a 12-step process, and each of those steps, it depends on classification of the position, so it's a little bit different. Some will be eligible for steps, some will not be. Depending, maybe, Mr. Knutson, you can address it further.
Sure. Councilmember Moses, Mayor Sheehy. Yeah, it's a 12-step plan that was, that was introduced two years ago. Each step counts for a 3.5% difference between the steps.
A 3.5%?
Yeah.
So if we add 3.5%, and then we're doing a COLA across the board for everybody at 3%?
So, yeah, and then, so if you, for some complications in terms of some employees that are topped out, that are in Step 12, that wouldn't be eligible for a step increase, but would be eligible for a COLA.
Okay. And this is kind of my question for council now, where I'd really like to hear a discussion. So if they're at 3.5%, and then we add another 3% on top of it, for those who are allowed for the, for their step, who are going to get their step, that's 6.5%, and inflation is 8.5%. And if we're trying to attract employees, and we're not even keeping up on inflation, is that enough? And I'd really like to hear feedback from everybody on this council, because I don't think it is, to maintain a healthy organization.
Sure. So first, this is proposed action from staff. So, yeah, at the council level, we can have that discussion. From my perspective, there's a lot of unknowns that are going on in the economy and everywhere, and I think that this is a fair assessment to show that we honor and support the good work that our staff is doing, but we are doing it in a way that is fiscally manageable going forward. So that's my perspective. I don't know if any other council members have a thought on, on the proposed rate increases for salaries? Councilmember Campbell?
Well, didn't we just do a positional analysis, and that was supposed to be put into place to kind of get us up to date? So I think we are up to date. I think this is a struggle across the board for every business owner, every contractor, every designer, you name it. We're all looking for employees. We don't have the benefit of just saying across the board, you're going to all get tax increases. I know I've given raises. I know I've done everything I can do in my business to make it work. But I am, I believe that after the positional analysis just last year, I'm not for the step increases or the cost of living adjustments at this time. I don't think it's fair to all the citizens that are out there struggling with the same problems, you, 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 all the way down the board, we're all dealing with the same problems. For this government to get a windfall, and we continue to struggle out there and try and pay our taxes, and try to buy our supplies, and try to do everything that we're doing, the businesses and the citizens of Lake Havasu City, I do not want to strap them with extra costs. That's my opinion.
Yes, so Councilmember Campbell, the step increase is already, the positional analysis allows for the step increase.
Yes.
So you are comfortable with that?
I understand that.
Okay.
Whatever the positional analysis put into place that we paid for, what was it, a year or two ago?
Two.
Everything, two years ago, but, okay. But I'm not, I'm not for a cost of living adjustment. But I do agree with you, Councilmember Moses, 3% is nothing on cost of living right now, because the houses, when, I mean, the condo that I just sold two months ago for $330,000 just sold for $500,000. So there's no way we can catch up with the housing crisis that Lake Havasu City and the state of Arizona and a country as a whole is, I don't know how to fix that. But right now, the way to fix that is, we all need to hunker down from this, we all need to work harder. With that being said, Lake Havasu City is extremely desirable city to move to and live in, and I know many, many, many of us took a cost decrease sometimes to be and live in this city, because it is a beautiful, wonderful city to live in. So I know a lot of people from California are coming here in droves and taking a decrease in salaries left and right because they want to live here. Where you're going to find a home right now, I don't know. I don't know if you're commuting from Kingman, I don't know what to do with all that. But I do want to say, I'm just not for the COLA portion of it, the cost of living adjustment after we just did a positional analysis when we're in a housing crisis, and we can't fix it anyways. If you gave them 3%, I bet you they still couldn't find a home.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. I kind of have a different point of view. The reason we had to do the positional analysis is because we kept saying, we don't have money to give you pay raises, we don't have money to give you pay raises. And it got to the point that the inflation got so high that we had to give everybody such a huge increase because of the positional analysis. Now that we brought everybody up two years ago to fair market value, we need to continue keeping them at fair market value. And the increase, as Councilmember Moses said, that increase isn't even keeping up with inflation. So every year, I think we need to do a COLA on, on top of their step increases, because the step increases are just as they move along in their position. Once they get to Step 12, there is no increase. And inflation goes up 8% or, and we're not even keeping up with inflation right now. So I'd like to see if maybe the 3% isn't enough, and maybe it should be a 3.5% COLA. But at a minimum, the 3% that, that the city staff has worked to, to put it into the budget is definitely needed by our employees just to keep up with inflation and to keep, so we don't have to do another positional analysis to try to bring people up to fair market value. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
I have concerns as well. I'm not an expert in this area, it's more opinion-based. I'd definitely like to maybe put Bobby on the spot to get her perspective, but you know what does keep up with inflation? Our revenues. They're based on sales tax, so if you buy a, you know, something for $5, it's now $10, you're still paying that, that sales tax. So, I mean, we are lucky that our revenues are tied to inflation. I have big concerns. I think the positional analysis is, is two years old, and we used it two years ago to solve a problem, and we're in a new problem category that none of us have seen before. And I think if we're not ahead of this, we're going to have, and we're already short-staffed as it is. I know the hospital, for example, is short-staffed, everybody's short-staffed, it's hard to get people. And the biggest thing we need to do is keep our people, so we don't have to get new people on top of that. So I, I do definitely, I think the positional analysis is great, I think we may have to rethink it, and, but I guess a lot of that is also up to HR. Before we'd make decisions at that level, you know, I'm definitely for the COLA increase, I could see it going a little bit more, but as far as us delving into that separate issue, you know, I'd like to know where, where we're at, what we're doing. You know, like I said, if we have a lot of entry positions and we're not keeping up, we can't get entry positions, then some of our higher-up people are doing more this level, and they can't do this level, and there's just a lot of problems we're seeing that we've never seen before. So I just want us to be a little more, and it's hard to delve into this conversation, because I think it's a whole nother issue that maybe we could have, but maybe that's something in the future Bobby can give us an update, because I think this is a little bit bigger than just the CIP budget, so.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Lynn?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I 100% support our staff, and retaining them and recruiting them is the most important thing, and being a business owner, I know what that looks like. I have, I struggle with the term fair market value, because fair market value is what it determines on the need for that employee. I pay a dishwasher $17 an hour, that's not fair market value, it's minimum wage. The 3% of the cost of living adjustment, what does that look like for a staff member down at the Aquatic Center making minimum wage compared to someone that's in the water department making maybe $80,000? So I, I don't like that cost of living adjustment, I don't, I don't like that term. I believe in giving raises to, to, you know, your employees on, on, you know, how long they've been here, and I just, I really, really struggle with that cost of living adjustment. I don't think the 3% is going to do anything anyway, really, when you add it to different salaries. So I, I'm not looking at increasing it, but I don't, I don't like this term either.
Okay. So you just not like the term? Is it the term, or should you support 6.5%? I guess would be a question.
No.
Okay.
Neither.
May I ask a question?
Please, yes.
So do you not like it, so you, what you're, I'm trying to make sure I understand what you're saying. So the 3% at the bottom isn't enough, and the 3% at the top is too much. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Is, maybe, Mr. Knutson, or if we can get an answer, how did the 3% COLA come to be from staff conversations? So where are we at with, how'd that number come?
Yeah, I'll ask Ms. Kimbleton to come to the microphone, and while she's doing that, I can talk about the fact that this is a reaction to not only our local economy, our ability to attract employees for vacant positions, and some of the challenges we have there. Dozens of times over the course of the last couple of months, we've interviewed candidates, we've made offers to them, they've accepted the offer, and then they call us back in a couple of days and say, I had now checked into the cost of living in Havasu, I can't move to your community, I can't take the job, I can't afford it based on, on, you know, the total package of what's, what's out there. We heard from other communities, Kingman is identifying a very large COLA, and that exceeds 3%. Bullhead City is doing the same. I asked Ms. Kimbleton to reach out to our comparable communities and see what COLAs are, are doing, are, are faring with, with them, so that we can just remain competitive with, with the market. And maybe Ms. Kimbleton, you could expand on what you learned from that survey?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. When we look at COLAs or cost of living increases, one of the things that we do is we take a look at what's going on in our labor markets. And our labor markets vary depending on the positions we're trying to fill. There are positions where we look and say, okay, there are maybe residents of Lake Havasu City who would make excellent employees in some of those categories, there are jobs that require certain qualifications, and we aren't going to find those people here in the city, so we have to go out and look at our comparable labor markets to see. The labor markets that were identified by the council are based on cities with a comparable population to Lake Havasu City, but a lot of those cities are located in the valley, in the, in the Phoenix area, and so they have a very different labor market, because they can go back and forth between the cities in the valley to, to find their employees. We're not that fortunate, because this, as beautiful city as it is, it's an isolated city compared to the cities in the valley. So we look and we say, okay, where do we get our labor from, and where does, where do we lose our labor to? And the reality is, a lot of our labor comes from California, and we lose a lot of our labor to California. And depending on whether those positions are professional positions or technical positions, that's where we really struggle, because those individuals have the option of going to work in Las Vegas, or Henderson, Nevada, or California. And so we look and say, there's a drastic difference between the labor market here in Arizona and the labor market where we're losing employees to. We took a look at our, our comparable market cities and said, what kind of cost of living increase do you anticipate giving? We look at, which was around 4% across the valley. We have a Consumer Price Index that we look at, which shows a 10.9% increase in the Consumer Price Index, and we look at all of those factors, including housing, cost of food, gasoline, all of those things to make a recommendation. And our recommendation is actually the balance between, if everything were perfect and we could do what we would love to do, here's what it ought to be versus what is affordable. And so the recommendation for the 3% cost of living increase was based on the fact that that seemed to be reasonable and would at least... that seemed to be reasonable and would at least keep us in the general vicinity of what the rest of the market is doing. You all did an excellent job when you put together the the position analysis two years ago, but the world has blown up and changed since then, and we are really struggling with, how do we find people to come to work here in Lake Havasu City when they could, it's a buyer's market, they can go wherever they want and they are?
Yeah, thank you. I think that's a great analysis of of kind of where the number came from and the factors that you all considered presenting this. Councilmember Coke, do you have a thought? Because we're very close on the, on who wants COLA and who doesn't want COLA.
No. And just like what Ms. Kimmel said, this is, I mean, obviously, it's not just here. We have a huge number of openings at the hospital as well. And if we're not taking care of our staff and they can go somewhere and their cost of living is not as high as Lake Havasu and they can make the same or more money, we're going to lose them. So it costs more to get a new employee than it does to retain the ones that we already have and and the expertise that we have on staff already. So I mean, it's, it's a necessary evil and it's a lot of money, but it's, it's, we have to take care of our own or we're going to lose them to somebody else that will, so.
Okay. So based on, just based on this initial feedback, and right now, this is a work session that we're going to go through lots of questions, so I don't want to dwell too much on this point. We're going to, we'll, we have it, we'll park it based on on the conversation and come back to it. But where we stand right now is is about three of us prefer the COLA if not more than is being presented. Two are on the support what's presented by staff and two don't necessarily support COLA at all based on the conversation we had here. Councilmember Campbell, do you have a question or or a comment?
Yes, a comment. No, no, I guess I don't understand, but Councilmember Coke, should you recuse yourself from this at this point? I'm not trying to be mean, but I'm just saying that I know that your spouse works in the staff, so I don't, I'm not trying to be a problem. Huh? What?
Yeah, we're having a discussion. We're not making decisions, getting direction, but maybe Ms. Gary can add clarification.
Yeah, in essence, by. I'm always getting this question in my face every single day. So I just, to save you from further questioning.
Absolutely. And so anytime we're dealing with a with a decision that includes a large class, there is an exception under conflict of interest law. So it's no different when we're talking about zoning or something like that, that affects all of you or maybe family members or that sort of thing. It's considered a class action and it's not specific to one person. And so that would most likely fall under that category.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, yeah, thank you for the question. And I, Councilmember Lynn, did you want to have a comment before we park this and go to other questions and we'll?
Yeah, I just, do we know what that total number looks like? Like if there's 3% went across the whole board, do we have that number?
Do we have it now, or that will come in the May hearing for sure, when we do department budgets? I don't know if Ms. Olson, if you're.
1% of a COLA was about $425,000, so 3% would be 1.3-ish?
Yes, that's correct.
1.3 million for the 3% cost of living? Yeah, okay.
Is that with new positions too, if they were filled?
That's across the board.
Yeah, citywide.
If I can make one more comment and then we can close it out, sorry. Because this is a CIP budget, not a.
Right, yeah, we'll get to, we'll have all these addresses, but we want to get through all the questions.
Appreciate you indulging me. She mentioned that that most of the cities in Phoenix are at 4% COLA. I think we need to keep up. And so I'd like to see a 4%.
Sure.
And that'll get get us to the 7.5% for inflation and then, you know, we're at least keeping up there. And then we can readdress next year when, if we've filled these spots or not. Because that's really, it's about keeping our people and then attracting new, and we can re, we relook at it next year.
Yeah, we can look at what that 4% looks like in our May hearing. We can, staff can be prepared to bring that number so we can have a discussion based on what those differences look like. All right, so we're going to park the the compensation piece right now. We might revisit it later on today or certainly in May. And Councilmember Moses, if you want to continue.
On the same page, sorry, we're not moving very far. Just, just two triangles down. Increase in health insurance is approximately 7.5%. Why? And can we find solutions? Because that 7.5 is a big.
The solution that we found was what we're doing right now. So we were seeing really large increases and so we kind of took control by having this health trust. And Mr. Knutson can speak on what the trust is doing.
Yeah, and then Councilmember Moses and Mayor Shee, thank you. We're part of the NAEBT Trust, which is Bullitt City, Kingman, Lake Havasu, the city of, and as well as the the school district here in Lake Havasu City. So we have a four entity, a four entity trust that that we work with. And we've been very, very lucky in the last couple of years, based on some very sound decisions by the by the trust. We've been realizing 1 and maybe 2% increases over the course of the last several years. This last year, seeing an increase about 7.5%. That is a direct reaction to the the claims. So you look at, every year, we have an annual meeting, we sit down, we look at the claim history, and based on the claim history, we we see impacts to the to the trust. We try to make the decisions the best that we can based on on the information that we have. But in large part, we had a large number of employees that received, that utilized our health insurance, which is, that's what it's there for, but in a, in a, in a capacity that 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 caused increases. One of the trends that we saw over the course of the last couple of years, and certainly this last year as well too, was members throughout the trust, it's not just Lake Havasu City employees, but of the four entities, an overutilization from the trust perspective of the use of the emergency room for 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 issues that don't require the use of emergency room. That would normally require the use of a primary care doctor or the use of a urgent care. Our employees were, our our trust members were were utilizing the emergency room to too much. Our COPA is, was 150 or 175, I think, for COPA for the emergency room. The trust made the decision effective July 1st, that COPA is going to increase greatly, $500. If you go, if you are admitted to the the emergency room, if you're there for the right reason, then that COPA is reduced. But we're trying to get our members of our trust across all entities to make better decisions on how to utilize the the efforts that are out there. Claim history, and then there's some patterns and things that we're trying to, trying to improve upon. But that's, that's the reason for the increase.
Okay. And and the school and everybody else who's a part of that trust is trying, is doing the same thing, right? Like, we're all under the same?
When it comes down to the trust, we're all, we all have the same insurance. There are some differences between the four in terms of the employee share and so forth, and how that works locally and how the health savings plan works. But for the plan itself, the the insurance that's provided, we're all on the same page.
Okay. All righty.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell, did you have a follow-up question to that?
If you don't mind. What is the current deductible for employees? I don't have the insurance, so I don't know.
Well, it's going to depend on a variety of different factors.
Oh.
I don't see, do we have a Brittany? I can send an email out and provide that to you. We have an employee and employee only coverage. There's a EPO, there's a health savings plan.
Not an easy question.
There's many, many, many categories.
And I'm sure you've reviewed all those options as well as trying to.
Oh, yeah.
Potentially increase scene if we have to.
Is a large, is a large deductible plan? Is that, is that the question, Councilmember Campbell? Was it like a $6,000 deductible?
I know it's not 6,000, but yeah, I was just wondering if, if could you increase deductibles or possibly, I think you were just mentioned one time, you do share too. We're in the same boat. We pay the insurance, we pay 100% for the whole families, plus we, you know, match, if you put in so much, we match it into your health savings. We have to look at all that as well. So I just was asking.
Yeah, we pay 100% for the employees, but there is an employee cost for for additional plans beyond the employee coverage. So we don't, we don't pay 100% for the spouse or for dependents or for the family, but we do cover the employees. But I can get you all that information.
Okay, thank you.
I'll send that to all council here later today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moses, do you want to continue?
Sure. I don't have anything on the next couple of pages, just that we're talking about the 21, 22 projects. I did come across a question on the next page that says available funding at the top with the five-year plan. And after hearing the presentation, I'm, like, I'd really like to know what we're not addressing as far as the water fund goes. Because of the actions that we've taken to, you know, from the public comments and reducing that, I'm worried that we're hurting our our long-term health. I'm worried that, you know, we're cutting some corners here and and trying to make it all fit kind of deal. And I, I, I'm really worried that in the, in the near future, if we're not doing, I'm worried we're kicking the can down the road. And that's something we committed to never doing again, right? And this is, this is concerning me that in 10 years, somebody's going to say, what the heck was Cameron thinking? You know what I mean? Approving a CIP budget with a water that isn't addressing these issues now.
Sure, yes, a great question. I'll give a very global answer and then turn it over to Mr. Sloan for some, some more detail. But keep in mind that this is a five-year CIP budget that we're adopting. Truthfully, what we're adopting now is one year with four subsequent years of a plan. And so what is identified in this next fiscal year is is what is feasible to get done and is addressing the most critical needs. But the staff does not like the uncertainty we have given them, that there's no subsequent plan for the four subsequent years for pipe replacement, water mains, tanks, all of those types of things. So based on the action, once we have the the conversation, and just a few months from now, early fall, looking at what the water and utility rate study looks like, we'll be able to come back and readdress it next year. They will have a different five-year CIP based on what we do and what what direction we give at that time. Now, it's also, just real briefly on the the rate study, we spent a whole lot of time on rates. What are the rates and how do they impact the actual rate payer? We spent a lot of time on that. But the entire study took all of the capital infrastructure that was necessary, that we needed within our system, took that piece. What that number was, it calculated that in, what our beginning fund was, what that number was, so what, how all those came to be, minus the $5.7 million of the IDD and what that looked like, and then what's the additional capital infrastructure needs we're going to be into the future so that we're not a community that you hear on the news that has, you know, bad water and wastewater infrastructure.
Right.
And that our citizens' investment is being protected. And so we only focused on rates and we didn't focus on the other components. So once you see all of those, we did, but we then got kind of tied up in the weeds on on the rate side. So when we have this discussion in the fall, we'll take all those points into consideration again, and then that'll help lead the discussion on what we do moving forward. So that's the real global thing. Do you want to know specific projects, Mr. Sloan?
Well, actually, so that does kind of, you know, I have a follow-up question now, you know, after that discussion.
Yes.
Yeah, is there anything? So I agree, we're, we're really just approving this year with like a tentative plan for the future.
Yes.
And my, my, I guess my more specific question is, have we cut anything this year that is going to be detrimental to us years going forward? And if so, can we, can we maybe look at those projects and think about ARPA funds now?
Yeah, great question. Mr. Sloan?
Yeah, that's a good question. So the the discussion the mayor had is is correct in that, you know, we're looking at a five-year plan. And so obviously, when we're trying to balance five years, you know, the the critical items that are in next fiscal year have remained in next fiscal year, and we cut the programs as we move down the years because our goal over the next couple of years would be to realize that they're not funded at that level and then get that funding up. We have removed a couple of specific projects from fiscal '23, but very few. Most of it is in the four years following that.
So we're taking care of our our system now?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, then, then I feel comfortable.
Great. All right. All right, so move on to the next question?
Unless anybody else.
Yeah, well, they're all going to get a chance too. So let's, let's keep on moving.
Sorry.
Is he going off the water rates situation?
He's going on to his next question. Do you have a follow-up question to that discussion? Yeah, please.
Yeah, yeah.
My follow-up on that is, again, we are still receiving the IDD money, which is the $5.7 million. As soon, and the rate, water rate study portion is the part that is the problem. It's not the wastewater that we actually cut way down. We're, we're, we're meeting our expectations on wastewater rates coming to, in, we're actually exceeding them even though we reduced multifamily down to 18. Where the water rate studies somehow failed us, as the way I feel, is because we're not even getting the rates that we projected based on the water rates that the study showed. But because we are still receiving the $5.6 million, we're sliding in there and and saving our butts. But by the, what is it, next year? We won't get.
June 30th of this year.
June 30th. We'll no longer be getting that IDD money, or receiving it. I know it's, it's like behind the rules or whatever, whenever it comes, I'm not sure about all those dates and deadlines. That is, then we're in trouble because what it looks like to me is the water rate study that the consultants gave us, we are, is clearly not even remotely meeting the $5.6 million that we lost. So I too, by the end of the year, am very interested to see how that all looks. And maybe then we need to look back at the two categories or classifications they did cut in water prices to make it, level it out. These are the discussions I hope we look at because there was a couple of classifications, I believe, as host hills and restaurants that they cut in the water only. The sewer looks to me fine based on the revenues that are coming in. I'm not an expert. As you know, I've been diving into this as much as I possibly can. It's taken hundreds and hundreds of my hours and time. It's been in my brain a lot. But for the sake of.
Sure.
Everything you're saying, the infrastructure we desperately need, you know, affordable for the consumers and the right thing for our community.
Yeah, so again, we'll circle back and have that conversation in the fall. The $5.7 million, though, is is done. So when property taxes are paid on, due May 1st, that, that's it if someone pays two different areas. So it's, yeah, it's critical. Yeah, so we'll, we'll have the entire discussion in detail when we meet, talk about that this fall. Vice Mayor Dolan, did you have a follow-up question?
I think it's just important, we're seeing this in different areas. Need to clarify, there's needs that are needs, and there's what we think we can pay for it and what we're willing to pay for it, but there's certain things that we we need, you know, and some of these, some of these items in the CIP, we, we definitely need them, and I think we even talked about that bridging over to the HR issue. There are certain things we need to do, we need certain amount of level of staff. I can close on Sundays, for example, if I don't have enough people. The city water and sewer department cannot close on Sundays if they don't have enough people. So there are many things that we, the government budgeting process and operations is is very complex. And I also have the same concerns as as Mr. Moses, and I think Mr. Sloan is being a little more diplomatic in the fact that, yes, all the level one critical items are on there. I'm sure there's many different levels to that critical list, and every department in here has different levels to their critical list. And I get concerned when we, we try to shave that just to find that fine line of what we can get away with this year till we have to do next year. So, but, and we see it with water, we see it in a lot of these areas, there are things we need and that we, but like I said, we also get caught in the weeds with, well, what we think we can afford and what we have budgeted, and sometimes they're totally separate issues. So I do want to thank Mr. Sloan. I also have those concerns, and I think we need to keep an eye on it even for the next five years, that we are getting those things on the list because even though we don't want to say it, I don't think our water system over the 50 years that we've had it has been taken care of as well as it should have over 50 years. And I think there's things that we, we need to take care of now or will be more expensive as we go down the road. So just a thought for that.
And just to reassure the council members, when it comes to the the capital discussion, Mr. Sloan has indicated that next year, all the critical infrastructure is done. There still doesn't matter how many staff members we have or how many resources we have financially or otherwise, there's only so much time in the world that can, they can actually do these projects, which is evidenced over the discussion that Ms. Olson had about the carryforwards. So we've had some items that were approved that had to carry forward because we didn't have the time or resources. Financially, we as a council did our work. And through the process, Jess and his team go together and have identified all of these things. So, I mean, great questions, but I just want to reassure you that this is, there's lots of things then, factors that are going in. Is even if we put more financial resources, we can't give them any more time. There's no more time we can give. We all have the same amount and they wouldn't be able to do certain projects regardless. And again, evidenced by some of the carryforwards that we're seeing in that discussion. So, all right, Mr. Moses, if you want to continue on?
I'll keep, yeah, I'll keep tracking along. The fiscal year 22, 23 CIP projects is the, I was just combing through and then like the third page, I wrote a couple of question marks. Exploratory well drilling and backup water supply and then north well field improvements. And it's kind of, I don't, and I could be wrong because I was hitting the head a lot as a kid. But, so my memory is not exactly there. But I feel like there's a shift in emphasis on more water wells. I thought our, the new water well that was going to be at London Bridge Road, I thought that was going to be our backup, right? And we're going to have the Rainy on the island and the backup at your field house. But now we're doing improvements to the other wells.
So if I may, let me, so the exploratory well drilling is just that. This is this item's number. A few pages back, you'll see the cumulative that we've spent already. So it's not a backup well, it's a secondary well.
So this is the secondary?
Yeah, secondary well, which would be, so we'd have two water wells that can act interdependently of each other. One can come offline and we can repair the other or vice versa. That's what this is. So this first page that you're looking at is next year's CIP budget for that project.
Correct.
A few pages back, you'll see then the cumulative total that we've already spent. But that will be coming on online as Mr. Sloan said earlier this year. But that is what that is. And then additionally now would be a backup water treatment study so that we have redundancy when it comes to wastewater treatment as well.
Absolutely. I've seen, so the north well field improvements and stuff like that. Are we, are we keeping those other wells? Like I thought we were just gonna have the two. Are we keeping all of the little tiny wells scattered all over the city? Are we keeping those up and going? Because I thought in years past, we haven't. I thought we just.
Yeah, it's a great question. And so as the mayor mentioned, the exploratory well drilling and backup water supply project is providing those two new wells in the north well field that were to provide backup for the horizontal collector well. There's also five or six other wells in the north well field. So this, these well, the new ones are 22 and 23, then we still have 10, 13, 15, 18. We have quite a few other wells that are currently being used. And so the idea is that we have two brand-new wells that can provide a portion of the water that the horizontal collector well can provide. We would require those other wells in the north field to operate as well.
So we're gonna need the other north field wells?
Correct. If we're using that whole north well field as the backup water supply. And so there's a small dollar amount in there for improvements to those existing wells. And that's because these wells are, you know, 25, 30 years old. They need new electrical equipment, new skate equipment. We want to bring them up to speed so that they can operate the way that we need them to, when we need them to.
Okay, great. No, I, I'm more informed.
Yeah, absolutely. Good question.
Appreciate that.
And just for clarification, those watching at home or at a future date, this is, because we have a secondary well does not mean we are getting more water allocation. Our water allocation remains the same. Colorado River Water is our only source of water.
But if you have two straws.
Where we take it from is all. Our allocation remains the same. So just in the future, so that's clear. All right, Councilmember Moses, you want to continue on?
I don't have any other questions on. Okay, going to the drainage projects. We're doing a lot of. Trying to see. Trying to find the projects. Well, I can't find the actual page, but I know the question I want. We're fixing some, we're fixing drainage problems on streets, right? On actual streets? Are problem areas where dirt gets washed into the intersections or different things like that?
Correct. And that's what I mentioned. The new project that we put in there, which is kind of generic name, wash crossing improvements, is most of everything we've always had programmed based on our master plan is improvements to the actual wash or the drain itself. You know, overlooking the areas where it cross roads. A lot of them were already taken care of with box coal beds or coal beds or some type. So this project allows us, which have been identified by us, have been identified by the public of, you know, areas of concern where water does cross the road, that we do not have an improvement. And so this will allow us to start taking care of those areas, correct?
So like the Mojave Drive flood control? I mean, that's, that is Mojican Drive. Yeah, thank you.
That's a separate project. That's a piece of property that we own off of Mojican Drive. And it's always been used as a flood channel, although there's new construction happening at the lower end of that. And so we have to make improvements to it to be able to drain water from our property into the storm drain system.
Got you. Okay, so that's not the, that's not a drainage problem on the street. That's a drainage problem on our property.
Correct.
Yeah, Councilmember Moses, if you have your pamphlet, this one, there's actually photographs of each of the ones. Some look like we, people are gonna lose their backyard pretty quick on some of the projects. And then some of the street projects, I mean, you've lived in like Kansas for a long time. You know, we just have to think our way home on a rain event. You'd have to like, okay, what road do I take and how do I get here? You know, now there's just a few left that need to be addressed that are preventing people from, you know, getting home in a rain event. And so that's what that new project is as identified. But there's at least some photographs that might give you some visual aid on what some of these drainage problems are.
Yeah, I'm going through that next. Is it, I guess, well, what I was trying to get to, because I thought I had something tied to it, but I don't. So there are streets that are problems after every single, every single storm, where there's just dirt debris everywhere. And then we have, we pay a street sweeper to come through and, you know, a huge contract every year and stuff like that. Can we start fixing some of those issues where, you know, like I lived off of Comet Drive and my house is on the corner and the water would just wash half my lot down the street every single rain. And then I got a landscaper, we put in a bunch of, you know, drainage rocks and stuff and kind of created my own little leach field right there and no issue. And I didn't even send the city a bill for, you know, my improvement. But is there, you know, can we look at some of those things so that we can maybe decrease our liability to the street sweepers every single year?
Yeah, this is a great question and we see the exact same thing. And it's really not covered under the drainage projects. What is really covered under is the street section. And that's where we've actually, you know, put in a program every year. We were trying to fund it to, you know, the max of the HERF money allowable that we could spend. And when we improve a street, obviously, we have to take into account where does the water go? Where does water come from? And we can start addressing those things. In addition to that, not on the capital side, but our maintenance division on the, in streets is actually already currently working on the highly identified problem areas and, you know, doing what we can on the maintenance side to try to limit, you know, minimize that as much as possible. But we would address it as we go through the priorities on the street repair or street replacement projects.
Okay. Thank you. And that concludes my barrage of questions.
Yeah, no, thank you.
So far.
Yeah, there'll be more. We'll just move down the dais and Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, my questions are on more of the bigger projects. I know we've been talking about the courthouse and we've committed to doing that. I think a couple of things that we haven't discussed, and I don't know if this is even the time to have this discussion, but even once we have it built, we haven't really talked about the maintenance costs or the operation costs in there, how it's going to be furnished, so that the number that we see.
It's 4.9.
Where, on one, it says four and then on one of these sheets, it says 8.4.
Eight is the total including lot costs.
Which page do you want me to look at? Because one says 8.4.
Yeah, so the total cumulative with this year is 8.4. And then if you're looking at your pamphlet, it's 4.9 in this year. Additional this year, which gets us to the 8.451.
And that's only construction?
That's, yeah, that's construction. There still is furnishing. And then the operational cost will be offset with the current lease holds that we're paying to the county right now.
Yeah, I checked on that. It's not a lot.
It is, it's considerable when it comes to that. But I don't know if Judge or if you want to maybe address what that ongoing cost might look like? Yeah.
Mayor Council, thank you for the opportunity to discuss that today. You know, the ongoing cost, the cost will always rise. And as we move into a new building and as we expand to meet the needs that we have of our city right now, those costs will rise, but they're not, it's not going to be a jump of, you know, 50% all of a sudden when we move into this new building. You know, there will be a greater cost in electricity, but there's always going to be a greater cost in electricity. The cost to run the court itself will only increase as the number of cases increase and those kinds of things. So that's all run by what happens in the city. And so it's, the cost will increase. There's no doubt about that. I don't see the city getting less expensive. I don't see us not having more violations, more charges, more people coming into the system. But I do see us being able to be more effective in what we do. You know, one of the things that we've talked about a lot is the ability to address issues of the people that come in so they don't keep coming back. You know, the treatment courts that we're having, the goal of that is to not have them come back. Let's address whatever those issues are. And so if you look at cost savings in a treatment court setting versus regular court, it's a dollar for, a dollar in treatment court for every $7 direct costs. And so as we get into a bigger building, we can have some of those other courts. You know, we can address those issues and we have people that don't keep coming back. You have a direct cost savings, but then you also have the long-term cost saving as somebody who is no longer in the legal system, has a steady job, is paying taxes and all those kinds of things. And you look at that long-term and you say, okay, well, it was worth what we were doing because while the direct cost looks like it may have gone up, it didn't go up as much as it could have. Because now we've got people that are healthy in the community, people that are paying their taxes, all those kinds of things. So it's really hard to say that, I can't stand up here and tell you folks that it's not going to be more costly when you look at what the cost is from where we are now to where we will be. But that cost would have gone up anyway, whether we stayed with the county or whether we have our own building. Those costs are going to go up. But what we can't do in this current situation is we can't have those other programs. We can't expand to meet the needs of the city right now because there's no room to expand. And so that's really what it comes down to. And that's the issue I think that we have, that we're addressing. But as you look at the curve, as you look at the curve going forward, I can tell you that the curve will be a lot flatter going to what we're doing than what we're doing now. And I think that's what we have to look at.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, and I agree about, you know, being proactive in these specialty courts and I really support them. I just am really concerned with that bigger look, what that looks like.
Right, right.
Are you just trying to make sure that the, that the staff and that we're all prepared for an increase in expenditures moving forward?
Everything. I mean, we're not talking about furnishing it. We're not talking about like who's running the place? How many people are going to be employed there?
All the staff moves, all the staff at the county that in our current cities, they literally just pick up their desks and their bodies.
But I'm talking about your janitors.
Yes.
And all those extra things that we already are covered by in our lease. I mean, our security guards, that's all covered in the lease over there. Those are all new positions that we're gonna have to put in there. Plus, we're already having trouble finding those, you know, jobs for other things in the city. There's just a lot of concerns. I'm not trying to stop this project. I just really want to address that that price that we're putting on there is not the completion of what this functioning courthouse is gonna look like. And it's a bigger project that I think that we're really, you know, really talking about.
Well, and I think Mr. Knudsen probably has a good handle on that too. There's no reason to spend money that we can't spend right now. And so as we look at where we're moving and getting into the building itself, it doesn't make sense to be talking about putting money, spending, buying a bunch of chairs right now that we're not going to use for two years, you know, those kinds of things. And so as we look forward, we plan it out that way. And then, you know, obviously, we can have that discussion. But those are the kinds of things that I think will come up. You know, I think as far as security and those kinds of things come up, one of the things that we're working on already is that we're trying to work with the county to get in on their contract. And so whatever the cost is, it won't be as much if we can get into the contract that they have and say, okay, based on all of these numbers, can we move forward with that? So, you know, we're already looking at all of those kinds of things, obviously with the understanding that we want to be conservative with the city's dollars, with the taxpayers' dollars. And we're gonna do the best that we can to make sure we address all of those needs as we move forward. But, you know, we will do that and we'll do that to the best of our ability.
Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Berlin, Mayor Sheehy, I think one point of clarification as well too is, and there's some confusion, we try to like kind of divide the work sessions up between the CIP today and then the operational budget that'll be coming back to us on May 12th, I believe it is. And they're good questions to have because all these things tie together. So if council is going to look closely at a CIP item, the question should be, should be in the back of all of our minds is, okay, if we spend that money to build that building or invest in that piece of equipment, what's the operational impact of that? If we're replacing an old case tractor or a front-load tractor that we're spending $10,000, $15,000 a year on replacement, then it could be a savings. If we're talking about a new building, then there's going to be overhead and other operational expenses that are tied to it. So we can visit a little bit more of that if you allow staff to do that at the May 12th meeting when we talked about the operations. But I think it's a great point of clarification. Anytime we talk about a CIP, we have to understand what the CIP budget is. We have to understand what the operational budget is. And not just, but the operational budget for year one, when you're buying IT servers and furniture and all the things that it costs just to open up that, the door. And then you have to have an understanding, we all have to have an understanding of what the operational impact is on an ongoing basis. So then that's the electrical, the overhead, the cost for janitorial cleaning services and all the things that are tied to that too. So we're trying to make it easy by staff by presenting it in two different work sessions. And sometimes it is and sometimes it causes some concerns here too. But, you know, is that helpful?
Yeah.
I mean, just a comment on, a comment and question on top of it, it's a great point. I mean, if we buy stuff, we gotta plan on housing it, you know what I mean, operating it. So is it, is it too early to start looking at, you know, what are those overhead projections? What are those extra costs that are gonna be, that are gonna happen because of our new courthouse? Because some of those, you know, some of those projections might influence what we decide to spend today or, you know, what we can do today.
Yeah, some of the state's policy, I mean, so as far as treatment courts, you know, we've already given the authorization to move forward on specialty courts. So we did that and the judge is moving forward. But when it actually comes to the cost, if we want to start one of the specialty courts the judge has been talking about, yeah, there will be a cost identified with that and we'll have to make that decision if that's the direction that we want to go. But yes, that's too early right now because we don't, we don't even have the capacity to do it if we wanted to because we don't have the physical space to do it. So the judge has indicated, at least in meetings with myself and I know in prior meetings of the council when we talked about specialty courts several months ago, that there would be increased costs on each one. And I believe there was two or three initially that you wanted to start with the judge. So it's unknown because it also depends on the grant funding based on the specialty that will be addressed and what those dollars look like. So it'd be a lot of assumptions, but.
I, that was a great question and I appreciate the answer. And I think our concerns that I share with Michelle is just as soon as we can, like I'd really like to know what those additional costs are so we can start planning. But that's just my curiosity. I also have another comment. If these treatment courts are going to be that successful, we might not even need a court eventually, you know what I mean?
There's an app for that.
We still have Arizona Legislature that will ensure we always have.
Or a police department for that matter, right?
Right, right, right. Because these are all going to go away. We're gonna work ourselves out of a job, yeah.
All right, Councilmember Lynn? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, please. Judge, we have had this conversation before as well, that there is a possibility that you could bring in in-home drug testings and all of this that could actually bring you more revenues if you had more space, if we projected it in the build and identified spaces that can actually bring more revenues to the court. I've not seen any of the designs. We discussed this probably a year or so ago. Do you still plan on recruiting as many revenues as you possibly can through possibly drug testing and a one-stop shop?
Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, that is still on my top three list, absolutely 100%. You know, we want to be fiscally responsible. And one of those is that if there is a revenue source that we can do that actually helps us, then we definitely want to do that. The organizations that I've seen that have done this, if they are able to get that revenue, then it pays for, you know, the costs of doing that. I would much rather do in-house testing. It just, across the board, it's a better way to do it. It's much more effective, it's more efficient, it's more immediate. And if we can get others on board with that, then that pays for its own cost. Obviously, 100%, I would be willing to do that. I think in what I'm seeing in the plans, we actually have the facility to do that. Some of the things that we're doing, we have the facility to do that.
Thank you. I was just hoping that we are moving forward on that.
Absolutely, 100%.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Councilmember Berlin, if you want to continue on with your questions?
That's all I have for you guys. Thank you. The downtown catalyst project, I'm really happy to see that we're gonna put a hold on that for a bit with all these other concerns with water and streets and all these things. I'm really glad we're putting a hold on that. I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, if I may, Councilmember Berlin, I don't see us putting a hold.
Well, we are not putting more money into it, so let's just keep it at that.
Oh, I got you. So the 895, okay.
I'm glad we're keeping it at 1 million.
Yeah, well, we're on that item. I do have a concern on that one too. That was one of my questions, so well, at least while we're talking about it. From the public conversations that I've heard at Parks and Rec Advisory Board and some of the stakeholder meetings, bathrooms seem to be a big issue, which I don't disagree. I think that's important as well as a shade of some sort. And with what we have budgeted here, we're not going to be able to do that. And so if we don't add additional resources to the downtown Callis project, we've limited what our options are and what the options are that the citizens are giving us feedback on until at least the following fiscal year. So that's my comment on that. I don't know if anyone else joins me in wanting to address the feedback that we're getting from the citizens. But right now, we're pigeonholing ourselves into not being able to address anything that they've asked for through the public process that's going on right now.
Okay, Mayor.
Yeah.
We're in public forum, right? Here we go. Let it rip, potato chip, right? I have also been probably the only one on. I have also been probably the only one on council here that has owned a business on Main Street for over 20 years and was involved in the Main Street organization, pounding pavement from day one that I moved in. And people, I love it when they say, if you have a parking problem, you have no problem. Well, that's baloney because I know for a fact my car gets dinged up and was dinged up constantly in the parking lots of the bars behind us. There is not enough parking on that street. There are many people that constantly tell me, I'd love to go down to that Main Street to prevent, but there's no parking, there's no parking. So I personally would love to see this table, this item tabled because I have a bigger vision of an actual parking garage that could possibly fit 600 cars and possibly sell the frontage portion, more like we talked about before, the Downtown Catalyst co-op with a partnership agreement. And we might be able to get, sell individual parcels on the front of McCulloch and allow a parking structure, which will cost us a lot more money, but it'd take a lot more time. And it may, a long-term visual would be if you have a parking garage that goes up four stories, three stories up, beats all the height allowances, also blocks the sound problems that I get complaints on the other side from the condo people that say all the music from the street goes that way. But what's ever even better yet, what I've seen in parking garages in today's downtown locations, they've moved their events to the top portion of the garage. If you actually apply it appropriately, you can do tents. And this would be a 12,000 square foot space on top, which is, well, excuse me. I don't want to do the math upfront because I did not get paid a dime for my design concepts and I'm just trying to come up with some ideas here. So what I'm trying to say is let's put a hold on it. I thought we were reaching out to stakeholders. I've reached out to a ton of stakeholders. Everybody's disappointed with just a big park with no parking. And that's what I've heard. So I've tried to fix it and figure out a way that number one, we can make extra money. Parking garage structures passed last year alone, revenue $25 billion to $30 billion in downtown locations. So I say a million dollars is not going to fix our Downtown Catalyst Project. Let's put the brakes on that and let's think through it and come up with something grand.
Sure. Mr. Knutson?
Thank you, Mayor Sheehy, Councilmember Campbell. What you see presented, as well as Councilmember Lynn, what you see presented within the CIP with the million dollars, ABC dollars, that's contributed towards that project. We're not in a position now to identify what the cost of the design, that's something worked on right now that was directed by council to advance. That we will get a much better idea of what the cost of the project is in the fall of this year, after the budget is implemented. So that's the strategy that's presented by staff at this point is that we'll wait for that time period to occur. We'll come back in the fall. We'll get, we'll have some conversations with council, we'll get direction. And that direction would then be placed into the following year's budget. So that's where, that's where we're at right now. We, staff can't come to you right now. We don't have the information to come to you right now to say that if you want to advance the ball with the original direction of council, we don't know what that, what that, what that means just yet. So we're, we're gonna, we're asking council to allow us to include that into the following year's budget. And over that timeframe, we can have conversations, excuse me, with the public and other approaches that may make him come about through that process. But right now, we're hitting pause and it's because we're still collecting the information. We want to come to council with the best information. We don't have that right now.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Knutson. That actually, that addresses my concerns. So we'll have this discussion in the fall and let the chips fall where they may. Councilmember Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify, I've had several people reach out to me as well from different businesses saying that they want to invest in this, you know, stage areas and bathrooms and all of that. I just want to get a clarification from Councilmember Campbell. You're saying do away with the downtown event space and make it a parking garage?
I said that parking garage could actually access six, again, mine are just very preliminary drawings that I do. Approximately 600 square foot, I'm 600 spaces for cars in a parking garage. But if you didn't want to use the top floor where the views are, which are done all over the towns, you can use that as your event space. On the second floor up, you can put some bathrooms. Then you'd have parking all below you. You have better security accesses to and from. You make a revenue source, the city makes a revenue source off of it based on parking costs during these big events. But your events go to the top of the building if you want. That's a huge weddings, that's whatever you want that the city would choose to rent. There's no update, no water usage. There's a lot of places that you could even use half of the top portion, which are great view. What I'm saying to the front of it, you sell individual parcels to business owners that could go two stories up and actually put, you could actually have view top decks for them as well. So you could sell approximately, if they're 20 feet wide, upwards of eight or nine parcels, 20 feet by approximately 75 feet deep. I understand Michael Gordon did a project like this before. That's what I'm saying, we're moving. I would think that you can move it up. Thank you.
All right, back to you, Councilmember Lynn?
Where am I? So the fire station rebuild. So I see we don't have very much CIP, we don't have anything in the CIP for the, for the fire department at this time, right?
For this next fiscal year, no.
So when, do we have any idea, chief, when the study is going to be back? Like, have we gotten any kind of timetable on that?
Mayor, councilmembers, yes, we're actually doing one of our final reviews of all the data that we provided our consultant. We are in the process of scheduling a site visit. So my goal is to have that done, a report hopefully at the end of this year, around August, September, so.
I just have, I'm nervous of what that study is going to say and pushing that we have nothing until 24, 25. I mean, I know we're doing year by year, but I just, I want to keep in mind what that study is going to come back and what that looks like, that we think about that as we approve other projects, that there's money put aside for what comes back in that study.
Yeah, absolutely. We're working diligently to get this study completed and the information, don't be scared.
I'm nervous, not scared.
So nervous. And the thing is, we just want to make sure we do this right now, the first time, and make sure that we have the correct information and look at the future of HABISU. I mean, just like we've discussed today, things change on a minute-by-minute basis. But the thing is, the study is going to really help us provide us a long-term plan for the future for fire protection.
And that's my only concern. You know, talking about bathrooms downtown, public safety to me is a lot more important than bathrooms downtown.
Sure. And I just may on that, so I think just to give confidence to council in this five-year plan, that rebuild for Fire Station 5 doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be a rebuild of Station 5. The study might come back and say something completely different, but at least we're committing as a placeholder funds for the chief and just to propose to us going forward, so.
And I'll, and I'll keep saying, I am concerned with our growth of HABISU as we continue to grow and what our infrastructure looks like. And maybe that Fire Station 7, and I'm going to say it every time because I have huge concerns with Riviera and Cherry Tree and the one-way ins and just not having our call times being too long. So I just, as we go forward on deciding on projects, are that we leave some wiggle worm and wiggle room in there for what we get back on that study.
Absolutely, no, I agree.
Okay, and then on the police facility. Let's see, the PD facility and jail rehab. Can, I don't remember, and this is just my memory, because I don't see it in prior. Were we talking about this before? I know we talked about the roof, but now this is a big project put in here. When were we talking about this exactly? Like, can somebody refresh me on that?
Yeah, so what, how this occurred is during some budget discussions, the chief and city manager had about the aging facility. It's 30-plus years old, so we're having some wastewater or some backup issues when it comes to plumbing, jail rehab issues, air conditioners on the roof, which we ourselves have felt, we happen to be in the police department. So many different issues. At the same time, congressionally-directed funding opportunities became available. And so Senator Kelly was the first one that we were able to submit for. And we were awarded about 1.6, 1.7 million from Senator Kelly's office and direct congressional funding for police facility rehabs. It met all of the checkmarks that they had. And so this next one, as proposed in this CIP budget, is from Senator Sinema's office for, again, congressionally-directed spending dollars. So somehow, how some of this then kind of got packaged together the way it is, is that the criteria from this congressional-directed spending had to go to certain tranches, is the term the federal government likes to use. And so they were able to say, hey, you know, we have this air conditioning unit issue at the police department. We'll put that into the category. We have this aging jail infrastructure, we'll put that into this category. We have backups and all of those, we'll put that in the category. And then it packaged into what now is this large number. But again, as proposed in this budget is being funded through direct congressional grant funding, if we're awarded that.
I, Mayor, please remind me, did we have, did we do a design? Do we have a consultant give us a design? I see on here, design was 550,000, did we do that previously?
Yeah.
I don't remember that.
Councilmember Lynn, Mayor Sheehy, yes, this last year, about 12 months ago, 15, or 12 to 18 months ago, we did a study on the police facility. So what we did was we brought in all the subs to take a look at the different issues that are happening. We brought in the AC experts, the plumbing experts, electrical experts and other fields to do an assessment of the building. That came, that cost came back at a little over $4 million to what's needed. Just a couple of months ago, the chief is expressing major concerns to our maintenance crews about the fact that AC went out here in the building. We were lucky that happened at that timeframe and not in the middle of July or August. The mayor, the mayor very softly says that we have different wastewater issues. We have leaks in our pipes within the building that are impacting, impacting smells and the structure of the facility. It's an old building and we haven't been keeping up with the maintenance. It's time for us to come in and bring the trades in and do, do an assessment, or excuse me, complete the, complete the improvements. We want our law enforcement professionals, our civilians that work within the department and within the jail itself to be concerned about their day-to-day activities, not if the AC is working, not if the smells are coming from different areas of the building. So that's the, that's the intention there, too. But we did, we did an assessment and now we're trying to match dollars to that assessment to make the repairs.
Okay, yeah, I support the project. I just was trying to figure out how we came to that. And I don't know what page it is, the Aquatic Center. We're going to do that. We're getting the, we're going to get the.
Councilmember Lynn, Mayor Sheehy, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a need. Anybody that walks into that, that building, the Aquatic Center, Community Center, it's, there's the humidity issues that overwhelm. It's a comfort issue, but probably more so, more impactful. It's eroding the structure of that, that facility. We need to get it done. Council approved it and last year's, this, excuse me, last year for this year's CIP budget, a $2.2 million, I think, improvement for the, for that, that project. Estimates come back at, we're now introducing it for this next year at about $3 million. I'm not looking at that specifically. Mr. Sloan, if you want to add to that in terms of the need and why those costs rose the way they did? If that's acceptable to the council?
Sure, yeah, this has been identified for many years. So we did do an analysis of it. And we had engineers, mechanical engineers that did the design part of it that said the existing system was not capable of managing the humidity levels in the, in Aquatic Center. So that's where it came down to actually putting in dehumidification. And so we actually did, it was budgeted in fiscal '22 CIP and we did complete the design. But when we got to the end of the design, we did have a engineer's probable cost estimate that was, you know, significantly over our budget. And that was based on material escalation. You know, from the year before when we had actually went under contract to by the time they got done with the design, the cost had gone up by approximately 20% on that project. So we did put it on hold to put it back in for this year. We have the design on the shelf, we're ready to bid it as soon as the funding is approved. And that should hopefully be happening next fiscal year.
Thank you. I'm happy that this is happening because as a liaison on the Parks and Rec Board, they've made it really, really clear that they're not supporting new projects. They really want to make sure that we're maintaining the projects and the infrastructure we already have. So this was a major thing for them, that this got done this year. They, as they listed, and I said it in past council meetings, that their priorities are really maintaining what we have later on, like working on the Downtown Catalyst Project, that they're, they're fine with waiting. And I feel really comfortable speaking on their behalf on that. So I'm glad to see that in there, even with the cost increase.
Great. Yeah, Councilmember Campbell.
With that, I don't have anything else. I just would like to ask him a question. Is there going to be any downtime at the Aquatic Center while we're doing the services?
Right now, the plan is the switchovers, the new equipment goes in a similar location, but different location than the existing equipment. So we can install most of all the equipment. It's just going to be the short time when we have to switch over between the old system and the new system. So, and we can most likely do that at night.
And I will tell you, if you're having a humidity problem, you're overusing your air conditioning systems, everything. Obviously, it's a car business, too, too many jobs I have. But the reason why I asked you the question about your downtime, I have noticed your parking lot is an asphalt cracked up mess. I also noticed your parking structures throughout. Being in the asphalt business, I know at times to go in there and trying to refurb that asphalt around parking structures is almost, it's called a hand fill with your asphalt. The men almost have to do everything by hand. Our company won't even, won't even bid those jobs asphalt moving forward because of the cost of all the hand job work that you have to do around the parking structures. And concrete costs are almost cheaper in the long run to literally demo and make that a concrete parking lot moving forward that will not need any more further crack seal or potentially in the long run, we're going to have to replace that asphalt. And what I'm trying to tell you, maybe not this year, but if there was some downtime in our budget, because I have some other ideas about cutting some budget items, maybe, to look at your parking lot, we have a brand-new hotel going in. That whole area is beautiful and developing down there. You know, the first thing you see when you drive onto the pavement is asphalt. And I know I'm the asphalt and concrete business, so I notice cracks in concrete probably more than anybody else in this whole room. But if anybody would like to do me a favor and take a look at that parking lot, you might agree with me.
Yeah, we have parking lot issues across the city in all of our facilities and there is a plan on that. We can address that in a, in a future question. But, Councilmember Lynn, are you?
That's it.
All right, perfect. We'll move on to Vice Mayor Dolan.
All right, we'll start at page one and we'll work through.
All right, I liked it that way.
No, just, I'm fine with it for the most part. I have a couple of just comments to make. A lot of what we do as council members is to bridge the gap between the city and the city staff and the citizens. And sometimes it's listening to complaints and being like, yeah, you're right, that's not fair, we should work on it. Or a lot of times what we do is we educate on the complexities of what it is we do. So first of all, I want to just thank the people in the audience and the people watching at home. This is a very complex situation and it's good to have the backstory. And I appreciate those that show up and attempt to learn it and take it all in. A lot of times people come up to me, why do you guys do that? That's stupid. And if I can't explain it to them in a 10-word answer, they get mad and think we're all idiots. So, but I do thank you guys for showing up. I thank the staff. There's, there's a lot of complexity that goes into this. And it's, this is my fourth one of these, fifth one even, sitting in the audience prior to that. So I do thank you guys for that. And I encourage those at home, if you have questions, it's easier to answer them here and learn all about it. So some of the issues I have, you know, every time I see a government building, I cringe. You know, I look at the fire department and I think, oh, it's just a big RV garage house. You could build one of those for like a million dollars. And I know that's not true, but part of me looks at that. You know, I'm like, seriously, a courthouse, that's 3 million. How much, how much does it cost to put in a bunch of walls? 5 million. Parking garage probably is $27 million nowadays, I have no idea. So, you know, I definitely have those concerns and as people in the community that, that don't understand the process and the limitations we have, I definitely have concerns in those areas. But, you know, the perspective, the courthouse, you know, there's a lot of potential there. We're not, we're not living up to our, we're not living up to what we can do. There's an efficiency level that we can create and it's not just the courts, it's the police. It's, you know, we have people at the gas station, you know, they arrest somebody and then they just get in that vicious circle and we spend a lot of money on that. And if we can correct some of those issues and we have the right resources in place and, but if we're always just putting out fires constantly, we're not, we're not staying ahead of the problem. So while the courthouse is very expensive, I definitely support that and it's definitely something we need. The Aquatic Center is another perfect example. I think it's ridiculous that $3 million worth for an air conditioner. I'm picturing the individual units that I've paid for over the years, like, how many can you fit on there? But, 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 but that's what it is, that's what it needs to be. It's not just an air conditioner, it's removing all the humidity from the room. And with humidity creates a lot of other issues that then the Aquatic Center will be on that list with bathrooms and all the other issues that we have, too. So just my thoughts with the Downtown Catalyst, same thing. I really have a hard time spending more money on parks and things like that when we have so many critical needs that aren't making it on this list. like that, when we have so many critical needs that aren't making it on this list. But like I said, I do agree with the bathrooms, it's definitely a concern. That's where I have a hard time when we spend a little, in my opinion, a little too much fluff with design. Let's just throw some bathrooms in and use what we have, because it's, we're not creating a park, we're, we're making it better for how it is already used. And the only other issue, the airport runway, I know that's been an issue. I don't think a lot of us realize how big of a deal it is. You know, they talked about it a few months ago, that it's going to be shut down this summer. And, you know, we don't have another runway. There's Needles, there's Parker, there's Kingman, there's Bullhead, but we don't realize how much that is utilized. You know, FedEx, UPS, we have doctors flying in, we have medicine flying in. There's a lot of commerce that goes on out there. I do like the fact that we're able, looks like we're going to be able to push it to the next year to make it work, so we can plan on being next summer, which is the slowest time of the year, July and August. Good luck getting someone that wants to come out and lay asphalt in July and August in Havasu, but I do like the idea, you know, but these are the complex issues we deal with. So I just, like I said, I just want to thank the staff for this. I think it looks good. I think we've covered a lot of the issues, and I definitely like the discussion. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Dolan. All right, Councilmember Campbell.
I, too, want to thank everybody for their hard work, and I'm not doing this because our questioning and some of the things I'm going to question moving forward, it's just because the industry I'm in, I talk to a lot of people, and I, like Vice Mayor Dolan, totally agree. I'm like, oh, step aside, we'll, he and I will build that whole courthouse on the inside for a million dollars. Just get out of the way. Piece of cake. You know, this is the way I, and the fire, fire stations, too. I look at that, and I'm like, man, I could, I could do that for $2 million. But sorry to say, government doesn't work that way. And so I agree with you completely on that. With that moving forward, and there's just a couple of things here. First off, as we get to the drainage portion of it, I understand that's an IDD fund that comes to us, and it's kind of dictated from the government above. Is this correct? The state level, not really local? Can somebody answer that? No, tell me more.
Yeah, so are you talking about the flood control?
No, I'm sorry, not the irrigation, the flood control.
Flood control, yeah.
Flood control, the flood, the flood funding that we're talking about, that I'm going into, that is, tell us where we get our funds.
Get us there first, and then we can know where we're at.
Let's go to drainage.
Okay, so your drainage on what?
Okay, we're just, all the drainages. The package on drainage. Will you tell me where the funds come from?
Sure. So we have, there's a flood, flood district that all of the residents of Mojave County, including the residents of Lake Havasu City, pay into that fund. All those dollars are collected by the county. They take off their cut, maybe more than they should, and then they redistribute those dollars back to the cities based on population. And so we get, we get that funding, essentially it's tied to the property assessments in Lake Havasu City.
Okay.
And so every year, in the past, we've gotten about 2.2. I think we're getting closer to maybe like 3 million coming up in the future, future budget, are just short of that. And so those, that's the, that's the mechanism and how those funds are collected.
And then we identify the individual projects?
So as Dan Sloan indicated, we did a master plan several years ago, and we identified which washes were in most dire need of repair over the course of time. And so we get that, we get our annual allotment coming from the county, and we continue to check off that, that project down the list. Mr. Sloan indicated that there is a line item there to, to improve some of the washes and drainage areas throughout the city. That maybe don't fall directly on that list, but over the course of time, common sense says, that's a problem, we need to fix it. And so we're, we want to be flexible in that regard, too. But yeah, we did a master plan, and we're checking off the boxes year after year based on, on need.
Congratulations to the master plan and checking off all these needs, because in my opinion, every single one of them needs to be done. With that being said, there's all these construction management services and design costs that are extremely high. Again, I have a problem with what, kind of like Vice Mayor Dolan said, what? $310,000 for that on a project that, as a contractor, and we have had amazing success with the last few contractors we've hired to do some of our drain work. I believe they've come in below budget, which is awesome. I've understood that these guys know how to do it. It's kind of the story about, boy, Main Street just went so quick and so fast, and wasn't that wonderful, and it was below budget, and we could do extra work. And those contractors came in, and they did a beautiful job, and they left. And anybody that knows street, anybody in our street department could probably go on that street and say, yes, they did a beautiful job. I don't really think that we needed to hire a bunch of extra supervisors to oversee the work of the contractor, because at the end of the day, when I'm a contractor, I'm liable for that job. That's my responsibility to make sure you're doing it right. You're the, you're the taxpayers, I'm not even going to say the government workers, but the taxpayers are paying our government staff to oversee these jobs. And I'm more for positional analysis increases, and I'm more, I'm in favor of the 3% increases. If we start saving money maybe on the other side, where I can say, hey, we don't need, I'm almost, I'm looking at construction management on the first drainage of 20,000, 465,000, 50,000, 240,000. That's a lot of money, I believe, for our, I believe, the staff and the contractors that we've been using for these jobs. This is not something new to Lake Havasu City. We've been doing these drains for decades, and these contractors, you guys are doing an awesome job. Can we cut out some of these extra construction management costs? Because every time I've hired a construction manager, a lot of times, they're just MIA at the end. They have, seems to have no liability, or the contractor ends up having a liability, or the actual city has the liability, and then they end up having to redo it. So I'm just saying, I know it sounds maybe not, I'm more of a business, but if they've been doing a great job, why do we have to spend a couple of million dollars on construction management services?
Let's get an answer on what that looks like. So for my colleagues on council, Councilmember Campbell's mentioning is, on each of the individual items within our pamphlet, there's a design, construction cost, and then the construction management. Design is a placeholder of 10%. Construction management is a placeholder of 15% of the total construction process. And so that's what is in here. Those contracts certainly will come back to council if they're over $50,000, and we'll be able to address each one individually. But this is a budget, a plan that we're doing right now. So these, these are the best engineers' estimates that they can give, again, using a placeholder of 10% and 15% for those items. Mr. Sloan, maybe if you want to address why you need construction managers, maybe that will help the council as well.
Sure, absolutely. And this isn't the first time we've had this discussion. But if you look at the CIP as an overall, and look at the number of projects, unfortunately, we have, you know, significant issues with recruitment, and we have two project managers. And so it's impossible to be out on every single one of these jobs every single day. I mean, it just cannot happen. And so we're actively trying to work with HR, we're trying to recruit and fill empty positions, but it's not easy. And so we do, at this point, have to rely on our consultants to provide that expertise for us.
With that being said, we do a lot of jobs. And I'm going to tell you, the owners aren't sitting there every single day, watching every step of the way, because at the end, there's a permit process, there's a final process, and then there's the exploratory process. Then it's not like we need to have the owners there every single day overseeing every job we ever do. So that is kind of my point of view, is if we save maybe some money in this portion, trusting the local contractors, the out-of-town contractors, we don't do this job, so I'll recuse myself on this. We don't do this kind of work. But we see the people that do this work, they do a phenomenal job. They're in, kind of like the Main Street deal. They're in, they're out. They, they know what they're doing, the prices are good. Then I guess, like, your project manager to come and do the exploratory, the permit, make sure that they did that job, could possibly save the tax dollars, almost $2 million, if I did the numbers really quickly in my head here. And in return, then, when we're saying, oh, let's do raises, or do we have to pay for higher insurance prices?
Sorry, Councilmember, I need to stop you right there, because these are control, flood control dollars, cannot be counterused for other things. These are flood control dollars, property taxes come in, unspecific to drainage.
But we can then expand upon our drainage and remove, I mean, we could do more projects.
Do more projects. I'll go with you there.
Oh, okay, all right, let's do more projects with, again, for the taxpayers, that's at a better advantage for them in the long run, if we get $2 million worth of services. Is that, am I better?
Yeah, but it's, can flood control dollars have to stay within flood control projects?
Okay, that, that makes sense to me. So, all right.
To eliminate, to eliminate, you know, construction management and the design stuff, we'd need more employees to, to handle some of these projects. I mean, so if we save the money there, you're talking about doing more. So I mean, the, the whole thing screams, we're going to need more people to manage that scenario that you described. And how are you going to attract them? You're going to attract them with higher wages?
I'm disagreeing with you at this point, because I'm just saying, these drainage jobs right in front of me here, whoever we hire as a contractor that have done these over and over, we don't, because right on the top side, if I'm paying this much money for design, $160,000, you're getting a pretty nice plan. As a contractor, that's a beautiful plan. And my job is to be totally liable for that, to make sure it's perfect to the end. And then at the end, inspectors come in and they check it. We're not saying you need staff, and all these people, I have never in my life had tons of contract owners standing around staring at my jobs.
Yeah, so when it comes to design, each wash has different needs. So each design is completely different.
I'm very aware of the washes in Lake Havasu.
Yeah, but each one of these projects, I mean, you can't say, okay, we did one design, and that's going to be.
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, keep the design costs in there. They're very high. I see them. The construction management portion is too high. That is my opinion.
Yeah, and you have that right to, to your opinion, and next question if there is one.
Thank you, yes, there's more. All right, so let's move on to.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask one question? That flood control funding, does that fluctuate the amount of money we get?
It does fluctuate the amount, the amount of money we get every year, and it's all based on our property tax assessment. So, yeah, if you look at your property tax bill, one of the line items is going to say flood control, county flood control, or something along those lines. And then, and it's basically every year, the county assessor will do an assessment, and then we pay X percentage of your assessed property value towards that line item.
What percentage, do you have like an idea what that percentage is, that increase every year? I mean, right now, I'm assuming it's probably even higher.
It doesn't, it doesn't increase, but the, so the actual rate stays the same, similar to what we talked a little bit about, or Ms. Olson talked a little bit about earlier about our property tax rate, where, where staff is not recommending an increase in the property tax rate this year, but because the, the value of the property has increased, the total collection increases.
Do you have the total? Do you know what that amount is that we collected this year?
For flood control?
Yeah.
Ms. Olson, help?
Sorry. The amount of revenue that we get each year has remained fairly flat. For a while, it was $2 million, 2.2 million, 2.2 million, and, and we're, over the last five years, and now we're, it's about at 2.5 million per year.
Yeah, and the county board supervisors is the taxing authority on that. So they, they set the rates like we set the rates for, for local lettings.
I can add, it's more, might be venting a little bit, is that the county reduced the allocation to the city two years ago to pay for some flood cameras that we don't need. We pay, we pay for it anyway.
And he got it in.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan.
Since we're throwing government under the bus, no, I think this, this is a perfect example. We forget the process, you know, the state actually, correct me if I'm wrong, the state has set a lot of policies in place in how we do things. If we have a great contractor, contractor, you know, that did McCulloch, for example, and, well, you guys are doing a great job. Hey, what other, what other street, like me in a business, what other streets can you do for this budget? And let's do this. We can't do that at the city level. We have to do a request for proposal, we have to get all the bids in, we have to take the lowest bid. And then, of course, in that process, we had to say, well, how much do we want to spend? So then we have these meetings, and we say, oh, we think that project is $2 million. And then we're surprised when the bid comes in right around $2 million, because we told them exactly what we're willing to spend. And so this is also the process of government, but it's also dictated to us at the state level that we, that we have to do. So our hands are tied in a lot, in a lot of areas. I think that's just an interesting perspective that, in some of these costs, and also, yeah, why can't we just hire this company to do a great job? And if they did, we would, but a lot of times, you know, are we hiring them, the state's perspective, is, are you hiring them because they're doing a great job and you trust them? Or are you trying, hiring them because your brother-in-law owns the company, and you're funneling all the money through them, and they just keep doing the project over and over again? And then by the time you realize that, they're not around anymore. So the state does require, this is also one of the vicious circles of government, that, you know, we have to have checks and balances, because we're spending your money. If I'm spending my money building my business, that's on me, but we're spending your money. So we have to hire somebody to show up and check. And I do agree, it's very annoying, but just to maybe understand why, why we do it, and that the state makes us as well. So they're the bad ones.
And just back on the drainage that you made that comment, without a doubt, I understand, we always have to go with the lowest bidder. But if you probably go back over the last decade here, you'll see the same people pretty much coming and doing these certain projects. That's what they specialize in. They'll do real areas like this, they pop in, they pop out. You do not have a plethora of contractors that are just willing to come in and do something they're usually not doing. So it is probably risky to say that, because we have to send it out to the lowest bidder, and we have to take a look at all that. But there's, it's the, it's very probable, not probable, it's probably common, we're going to get the same people we've had in the past. And every particular job is different, but I have a little knowledge on that. Okay, can we, we'll move on then?
Please, yeah, your next question.
The next question, and Vice Mayor Dolan, you might be able to assist me on this, and there's a lot of notes on this one, because again, I understand that when we charge for government jobs.
Tell us where you're at.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, tell us where you're at, so we can join you.
Courthouse, I think we're spending too much on it. I'd like to go back and see what we can do to cut some costs in there. That's all I got to say about that. That's way too much money for me, but I'm going to leave that one alone, because I know dirt more than anything else and stuff like that. So I'm going to go on with that.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is the capital improvement plan for the tanks, the fuel tanks.
The city fuel facility.
City fuel facilities. And what I understand here, for the $1.9 million, these are two additional fuel city, to save revenues, I'm sure, you know?
Yes, so the idea here is, right now, with rising fuel costs, it's really come into focus for us. But I'll turn over to staff for more details, but to have fuel facilities where all of our fleet vehicles could go and fill up their vehicles, one near City Hall, one at London Bridge, our maintenance yard is what I heard earlier. But then, Mr. Sloan, if you want to talk about what, what vehicles would use this, and what cost savings we could expect by buying fuel this way?
Sure. Number one, it starts out with the distance, you know, I mean, obviously, if we can fuel equipment close to where the equipment is, it makes a lot more sense. And number two, with the volatility of fuel pricing, if you can buy fuel in bulk, you can obviously get a cheaper rate for fuel. This was a new project that was added in based on, you know, the current economy, and pencils out now in this economy, and it makes sense to do, so.
On your tanks that you have here, I tried to see, what size tank is this that you, two tanks is what I understand. There's two tanks, total of 300,000 in design, construction is 1.5 million, 150,000 in construction management. Vice Mayor Dolan, I hope you're following along when I'm saying this. Now let's, what was, what's the size of that tank?
The tanks have not been sized yet. This, this project was just placed in very recently.
Okay.
The cost estimates for the tanks are based on the current fuel facility project that we're doing at the police station, and we're doing a 12,000-gallon tank there.
It was a 12,000? Okay, because after I got that number, and we have these tanks, and I'm sure, you have a tank above ground, Vice Mayor, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I chose to contact Charlie Riggs, who actually supplies these tanks, and said, really? Is this seem logical? And I won't tell you the word he wrote, I wrote down here, okay? But he told me for $100,000, that would be the 10,000-gallon tank with pumps, card readers, everything, you would have to put a fence around it, that, that's, it took, excuse me, double walls, self-contained tanks, no, with, where you don't have to even use the no pollution container area. And so the total cost for two of those would be $200,000, but we are going to pay 1.9 million.
Yeah, again, if I may, we're talking big picture here. So all these items are going to come back. Do we support the idea of, of fuel station or not? And if we support that, then staff can go and get engineers' estimates, and it'll come forward with us. And if you think at that point.
And we can invite him to bid on that, and come in at 200,000.
Yeah, if 1.9 is too much, I mean, I, I mean, just, we're talking concept for a plan right now, a very large spending plan for the city.
Because I also have heavy equipment, and I know how expensive diesel is right now, to drive from one part of town to the other part of town, to the other part of town. And our fuel prices are extremely high right now. And I know everybody could have a little gas card, too, and there's spots everywhere.
That's what this is trying to do.
Well, no, I'm saying, everybody could have little gas cards, and they could fuel at a local stations throughout the community. I think Parker Oil is where we go to now. But I am not for this project. I think it's too much money, and I think 1.9 million is a lot of money for gas. And that, I'm just going to say I'm against that project.
Mr. Mayor? And I just, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn, then we'll turn over to Mr. Knutson.
Yeah, I, I think the concern that I have is this design. I mean, we spent half a million on a courthouse for a huge design, and 300,000 for some gas tanks. Like, do we ever pay for that, or that's what we're budgeting? for that? Or that's what we're budgeting? That seems like a huge amount for design.
Yes. So again, the design would come before council in this next year. And then if, if that's the direction that council wants to go, then the subsequent year, according to this plan, would be the construction for, for building a fuel facility. But Mr. Knutson, if you want to add some clarity possibly?
Yeah. Mayor, council, part of the plan, I'll let Mr. Sloan kind of elaborate, is there's two projects here. One is for the police fuel facility. And then we're talking about the, the concept of staff researching a fuel, additional fuel yard that we can use to buy bulk purchase of fuel and for our other departments, not just, not just police. We've been paying $30,000 a year just to ensure the, the fuel tanks that are underneath the ground, back behind the police, police building. And that's, that's what we're talking about for the 1.9. ADQ has identified these as leaky underground storage tanks. And, and it's costing us money to ensure because our carrier won't, won't do that because of ADQ's assessment. So there's a little bit, there is, there is, we made the comment after having a discussion, too, at the executive team, is, is ADQ wants us to pull those tanks out in a manner that they prescribe, in my mind, so that we can throw it in the landfill. I, to me, a common sense approach would be, let's leave the tanks underground and build new tanks on top of them. They're empty. They're not, you know, we're not using them anymore, you know, so on and so forth. But there is, there's a process in place. And I'll let Mr. Sloan kind of explain the big picture aspects of what that total project entails.
This is a different project that, that we've moved three, three pages up now, right? Because we're on the one.
We've bounced back and forth between two conversations. And I was trying to allude to that, too. So the police, the police, police fuel facility is one project?
100% all in on that one.
Okay.
Okay.
And then that's the one, okay.
Go ahead.
So the, and then the other one that you're talking about is the additional fuel, fuel yard? We have no idea what that, what that looks like right now, too. That was something that we literally put in place.
Yeah.
When we had fuel spikes occur here within the last couple of weeks.
That's the ones I'm not for. I think they're too expensive for the savings, considering when equipment has to drive across town, too, to get to certain locations, sometimes it ends up costing substantially more in fuel costs to get from 1.8 to 1.8.
So if you.
But the one over at the police station, that's underground, that needs to come above ground 100%.
That was, that was true. And the, the concept here, too, is that staff will be doing a, a analysis. We needed to know that if we bought tanks and we did a project like this, what's the return on investment? Would we be able to pay for the project over the course of the next six to 10 years? In my mind, if we can do that, that starts to make some sense, given the life of the, of the tanks. If we can't do that, then, then it's a misuse of dollars. So we're going to, we haven't, we just put a line item in the budget just to, to set us up to have a conversation, do the research, do the analysis, come back and say, hey, this works. Or come back and say, you know what, this, this doesn't pay for the savings that we're anticipating. So just want to, this is, I think sometimes, as we go through this process, these are the, these are the, this is the feedback that staff needs to know in terms of big picture and in the type of project that's out there. But we haven't got bids on any of these, these things. We haven't done the analysis on any of these things, too. We're putting down a number that allows us to pursue that, that to one degree or the, the other through the budget process. Yep.
Okay. And just, all I was stating is I did a little bit of an exploratory on it, including the person that puts these ends. And, and he said, he advised me to say no go on that.
Yeah. And even to your point, Councilmember Campbell, if you take the police fuel facility, even double it, it's, it still is a high estimate. So.
But that makes sense.
No, no, agreed. So I mean, your point is 100% well, well, well taken. And Mr. Knutson and his team will obviously bring back something and council will say yes or no based on when it's action front. But yeah, thank you for those, those points. Do you have additional questions?
Okay, because we're not, we're moving past, are we?
Do you have any more questions on fuel that you don't feel comfortable, like?
Oh, no.
Oh, yes, let's go on. Yeah.
All right. I'm going to kind of go down the line.
I'm going to go down the line because it seems like it's easier. The channel dredging, all for that. The quadic havoc, absolutely. And humidity rates get high, you have mold, contaminations, health issues. I'm sorry it's taken so long to address this. I'm looking forward to seeing that done. And again, I think, as you could even see it in the picture there, I would like to see an asphalt parking lot, not asphalt, excuse me, because nobody will do it, concrete parking lot. The Dixant Memorial Pickle Pole, wonderful that somebody else did that. That's great. Fire station rebuild, again, I think that's expensive, but I'm all for whatever Pete Polopis thinks we should do. I like him, so I say yes.
Is that all it takes?
Okay, I just trust him, you know? And I'm waiting for the study as well. Does that make sense?
Yes.
We're all waiting for all of that. That's great. The police fuels facility, obviously, we, makes sense, pull it above ground. That's brilliant. Where are we at? Rear parking lot rehab expansion. Oh, the PD, yeah.
So if I may, Councilmember, let's go on the one you just have a question on. So if you have a question.
Okay, yeah, okay, let's go back.
Skip on past it.
Okay, just.
Yeah, just in the interest of time, I want to make sure we get.
Can I recommend putting page numbers on this next time?
Yeah, I think that's, that is a great suggestion. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. When we go into the roads, capital improvement plans, and I'm sure you're going to do that on streets, I'm on the streets portion. I just would like to see an overview of everything to see if there's any way we can save tax dollars on combining other roads that just make logical sense. That's an easy one. All this looks good. This looks good. All right. What do we have? Oh, I'm on the metal storage building.
Under wastewater.
Yeah, improvement plan, wastewater, storage building. Design cost $50,000 to construct the metal building that's going to cost 150,000. Very questionable. If anybody has any comment?
Yeah. Again, these are numbers that they'll come back with us when these are, this will be over 50,000. Yeah. So that'll be a great comment at that point unless, unless there's, I mean, these are, a lot of these are placeholders because they just don't know until they go bid it out. So unless you have any feedbacks, Mr. Sloan?
Right. And on the metal storage building, obviously, it's going to require structural improvements for the foundation and electrical. So just those two alone would probably cost $50,000 to design.
To design?
Yeah, you can get the metal building designed by the metal building manufacturer and purchase that. But the onsite improvements have to be designed by a licensed local or a licensed Arizona engineer. It's a requirement, it's state law.
We need to get an in-house licensed engineer. Moving on. All right. Let's move to capital improvement plan, water waste, north end wastewater system expansion. And I just want to say here, this is not even my handwriting. This is where my husband starts writing notes on my books. That's got to tell you something. This one says, this project will develop the wastewater infrastructure required to serve the Victoria Farms Road area. It will also address the lift stations at Canterbury and Refuge, and develop solutions to pump into new lift stations or expand IPS. Well, as we look at that, the first thing we noticed is if we're expanding on the Victoria Farm Road area, why are we expanding the sewer system? Can you, are you guys on the page that I'm on? Okay. Do you see where you guys are at? That's not even Victoria Road. That's way up above where there's a bunch of flood zones that basically you were probably never going to be able to build on. I recommend.
The big green line is what she's referring to.
The big green line. I'm saying, let's take the big green line and move it down to Victoria Road where we actually need it, where we can actually develop all those properties around there. We're going to spend $3.5 million in tax dollars. We might as well put it in the right place. My personal opinion, or based on my, I think that's what my husband's notes say.
Okay. The, I believe the green line you're talking about is an existing force main that is going from the IPS to the North Regional Treatment Plant. So that's not the expansion portion.
Oh, okay. Because according to us, that looks like the expansion, that that was where we're going to go.
No, no.
So where are you expanding it to?
So the Victoria Farms Road area is not going to show any existing sewer because there is no existing sewer. But it is in our sewer service area. And so there's, you know, you guys have seen in front of council, the potential developments that are going potentially trying to go into that area. So our job is to be able to provide wastewater to that area. And how we do that is, you know, potentially expanding the IPS, which is the lift station directly next to Chenoweth and Victoria Farms Road. But we would, you know, we need to do gravity. So we need to go all the way from Victoria Farms Road down to Chenoweth, because that's where our existing wastewater connection is. So we're, we're developing the plan right now. What does that look like? We also have on the west side of 95, a couple lift stations that pump south all the way down to Bombay, and then pump back north through the IPS up to North Regional. So if we're redoing that area across from Victoria Farms or in the Victoria Farms area, it makes sense for us to try to find a way to take care of all of that excess of pumping. I mean, not just the pumping cost, but the storage time, the odors associated with that. So it's more of an expansion and look at how do we manage the system on the north end in a better way.
That sounds good. I, that's what it looked like to us when you saw the green marks there. But we totally agree with you. If it's within a service area, and you have property within a service that shows that you have water and sewer, we have a liability by that. It's my personal opinion.
And then I have a question on this item, too, while we happen to be on it. Probably more for Mr. Knutson. When we approved some of these rezoning issues, it was my understanding that we wanted the developers to be paying their fair share for the infrastructure expansion. Is that still the intention?
Yes, sir. So this is, some of this project is related to the council action for the minor general plan amendment that was approved by council and the subsequent zoning. If we're going to allow a developer to build out in that area, we have to be prepared to provide sewer service. And so this is, part of that is that response, obviously includes the entire area, not just for that, that one, one project. When the developer, if the developer, when or if the developer comes back to the city and says, we're ready to start, start the conversations for permitting and, and all the rest, at that time, well, those conversations will occur with regards to a development agreement that says that here's the costs associated with your, your development that, that you need to cover, and that shouldn't be placed on the, on the, on the existing taxpayers. So yeah, the project is in there, the funding source, we're going to have to identify more so.
Go ahead, Terry. Thank you.
Just to clarify, that agreement does come back to council for approval, so we can have that discussion then and make sure they are paying their fair share. No, just a general billing question. We can't bill wastewater in one, like, in this area, we can't charge them more for, because they're putting a bigger need on the community, on the, the system? I mean, like I said, or is it, it's all based by the specific categories they're in. So we can't charge more for developments in this area, even though now we're required to put more in the area?
Yeah. If I, if I can, Vice Mayor Dolan, Mayor, members of council, you know, when we have one project that, that comes to the city that requires a large investment, to me, that's a different situation than a, a region or an area that we're, that we're taking a look at. So if there's a community good that we can invest in from the city's perspective to spur development or, or construction, or benefit a large amount of users or property owners, to me, that's, that's a city responsibility. Just, just my thoughts on it. When you start investing large amounts of money for one specific project or one specific owner, it's, to me, that, that's where some fair share should, should come from, from that owner at that point. If that's the, that concept is shared by the council, that would be how we, how staff would proceed?
And I just want everybody to understand, I'm not saying that we expect to pay, I know for a fact that the development at the end of Shima Wavy, we will do all the infrastructure for the 120 lots. We will pay for all the ground. We'll pay for everything. But we had, it's within the city limit, so we have the right to be able to connect up to your sewer. But it's logical for the sewer to be at least somewhere near the service area. So, and then how we get our money back per every lot that we sell is on us, the developers. I totally understand that. So I want to clarify with everybody, I don't expect, because there's a developer coming in there, that we, the taxpayers, have to pay for their whole infrastructure. I'm not saying that. But we are so close here. We're not talking, you got Lowe's right there, you have that trailer park that's already got sewer. We are right over here, but we put in our own septic tank system. We've even discussed that.
Are you talking about you?
Yeah. No, no, I'm talking about.
Okay.
This, this whole area.
Your we's are confusing me.
Okay, well, what I'm trying to.
We the city or we the.
Okay, understand where you're at. But what I'm trying to say, I'm clarifying that as a developer, I understand that that developer is going to have a lot of responsibility.
Yes.
But this is within the city service area for these products. And if we can, for the better good of a lot of different community area, we might have to put some extra infrastructure in there.
And you are not the developer in this particular.
No, 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 no. I am not the developer in this area.
All right.
I refuse myself. I am not.
Let's move on to the next one.
Okay. I'm almost done. So you guys will be happy here. Let's see. Oh, the capital improvement plan, water, water main replacement, the $2 million. The project involves replacing a half inch water main on Lake Havasu Avenue between highly, yes, 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 yes. We have fixed those streets so many times for this. So I'm just letting you know personally, we don't want your work anymore. We don't want you to pay us anymore. Please fix that water main.
And that's a 12 inch water main, just for the record.
Oh, 12 inch. Sorry. Did I say inch?
It did, 2 inch. But I just, people watch this later, and I don't want to think, why are they putting a 2 inch water main on the street? It's a 12 inch. Yeah.
Did I say 2?
Yeah.
Or did I say 12? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's just for folks watching.
Correction. 12 inch water main breaks all the time. Costs us a lot of money. Time to fix it.
Yes.
Okay. Was that okay?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right. Let's keep moving. This one is a little interesting. I'm going to agree. We're going to the capital improvement, capital improvement plan, water.
For the water treatment plant improvements?
Yeah, water treatment plant improvements. It says, there are three main treatment plant improvements identified in the water master plans that are need to upgrade. The first is to construct and close over certain treatment components of the water treatment plant. These components are biological filters and cascaded aerators. I understand that. From the nearby concrete plant covers the exposed pipes with, but the point is, is our concrete plant has been there since 1974. I don't understand why this is a problem now. And so then we contacted ADEQ, and they said that we're way below our discharge level of dust. So I just want to put it on record that I believe the project needs that, but I don't know if it's entirely the concrete plant's problem. Do you agree?
Yeah. So, so it's in the description. I mean, that, in the description, I guess one of the causes is, is identified as.
That neighboring concrete plant.
Yes. So Mr. Sloan, if you want to address that.
I'll go ahead and discuss that. And, and it's not. It's absolutely, anybody that's around there, there's streets, roads close by that are not paved. And it comes down to bird feces. Anything like that is the concern from ADEQ.
And I do agree, you need it. And it, we live in the desert. There's a lot of dust and dirt, and these things should be covered. I just wanted to clarify that. And that's all I have to say.
All right. Well, thank you. Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, let's drag that, that horse over here so I can beat on it, too. First off, I'm going to be real quick. I just want to reiterate a few things. One, fully funded, what that means, and this is for the people that are watching on TV that, that don't always watch these things. That means that when we're going to do the projects, we'll have the funds. We're projecting to have the funds, not that we have money in the bank today to pay for those funds. And I'm really happy to see that you have the, the funds there. You've identified the source, but you're also going to add the vehicle license fees for some of the road projects, because we need to do that. Deferred maintenance is a big issue. $25 million in the wastewater and water infrastructure, $25 million of deferred maintenance. We don't need to look very far. Just look across the lake to the people that don't have any water for a whole month. What happens when you defer your maintenance on your system? Or look up in Donkey Acres, where we can't even hook up to their fire hydrants because of their deferred maintenance. So we need to keep that in mind when we're setting our rates for these enterprise funds. Deferred maintenance, it costs us more money in the long run. We're looking at $4 million now because of deferred maintenance, just on this building alone. We need to see what we can do to try to get rid of deferred maintenance. Deferred maintenance, when it comes to our employees, we deferred maintenance on making sure our employees had the right amount of money for 10 years. We can't afford to do that any longer. I know we beat that a while ago, but it's important that, that we keep above where we were at and not let it fall behind like it did before. The HVAC, the Aquatic Center is causing other issues with all that humidity, the rust in the building and everything else. We've got to take care of that. And Councilmember Lynn, thank you for bringing up the courthouse. We have, people ask me, why are we, we have a courthouse. Why do we need a courthouse? We don't have a courthouse. I have to reiterate this to the, to the public. We do not have a courthouse. We rent space from the county courthouse, and they told us, get out. We need the space for ourselves. So we have to have a courthouse. It's going to cost us money to build it. It's going to cost us money to keep it up. It's going to cost us money for maintenance. But we have to have a courthouse. We just have to try to keep that, those prices down. And then the last thing, and this is just kind of getting in the weeds, but. And then the last thing, and this is just kind of getting in the weeds, but the healthcare, the $500 deductible for the emergency room that Mr. Knudsen talked about, that's only if you go to the emergency room, this is for our, the people on the health plan, if you go to the emergency room, and you didn't need to go to the emergency room, you could have just gone to your own doctor. If you go to the emergency room and you, it was a true emergency, you won't have that $500 deductible, it'll be zero, and the other deductible that you have, that you go to your doctor, is still the same, is that correct, Mr. Knudsen? So your deductibles remain the same, it's just that high usage for people that are going to the emergency room, because they don't want to go see their own doctor. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Lynn, and Councilmember Koch.
Thank you, Mayor. After reviewing my notes, everything I was going to talk about, we've pretty much covered, so just a thank you to the staff, that was a great presentation, you guys do a great job every year, and cover a lot of things, and I know you put a lot of time and effort into it, so thank you.
Excellent. All right, so bringing it back, most, all of my questions were answered as well, we answered them throughout the process, so thank you for that discussion. Next budget hearing in May, we're going to start with Councilmember Koch and move our way down this way, so just to give everyone a fair option, an opportunity to ask their questions and, and understand what it is that we're doing. A couple of things that, that we parked was wages, so Mr. Knudsen and Ms. Olson and team, if you can just bring back in our main meeting what it looks like, based on Councilmember Moses's request of 4%, what the total dollars are based on the 3%, so that we can have that full discussion at that meeting and give proper direction to you. And also, the, the water fund, we did address it, obviously, the, our actions on our October 26th meeting are dictating what that is, but we have a commitment, and I got from a note ahead, just as I was looking at, we will address that in the fall, so we can give some certainty, but at least year one of the five-year CIP budget is addressing all of our critical infrastructure. I would like to thank staff for all of their work, everything we talked about at our planning session back in February, which I'm just trying to tie the pieces together of all the conversations we have, how, how and what our words matter, so we talked about roads and our, our interest in increasing road maintenance, this identifies that. Water, wastewater, infrastructure, this again addresses that as well. Also addressing the maintenance of our infrastructure, I think we'll learn more about that at our May meeting, to ensure that the maintenance needs are, are done, and then of course, the focus on the courthouse that we've been working on when it comes to some of these items. So again, thank you for all, all the work you did, you know, we spent two and a half or three hours today in a public session, and then several hours doing some research before, but you guys have been working on this, as Ms. Olson mentioned, for 10 months, I mean, it's, it's a lot of your, your world, so thank you so much for doing that. This is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on any of the items that we talked about today?
Yes, Mayor, and council and staff, thank you, you've done a pretty thorough job of ripping everything apart. James Maniachi, I live in Mountain View Estates, I just wanted to confirm that, since the public doesn't have the detailed book, and when Dan went over the street stuff, or maybe it was Jill, there was a projection of additional revenue by taking 25% of the vehicle license tax and adding that to the HER funds, is that new?
Yes, that is new money projected for this coming fiscal year and forward.
$1 million will go a long way, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And just for clarification on that one, too, that's, that's money that normally goes, we currently collect right now, it's not additional dollars, but normally goes into the general fund, and the council has made it perfectly clear, we want to invest into, in our infrastructure and, and in our roads, and that's one, one way of doing that.
That's a great clarification, thank you.
Hi, David D., it's just a quick question, nothing for Jill, on the new municipal courthouse, you mentioned $8,451,500, when did we spend $3 million to buy the courthouse?
Two years ago.
We did that in 2020.
Yeah, two years ago.
So why, why is it three, why is it, why is it back, back in here, then? I'm just curious, maybe I'm...
It gives us clarity as a council, so we understand the total investment, so that doesn't, it's not piecemeal, the total investment is the 8.4 that you see there.
Oh, yeah, because it's a little confusing, it looks like we have to spend that 3 million again, but we've already spent the 3.
Yeah, this year's one is the 4.9.
That's clear.
Yes, yeah, thank you for, for that clarification.
And then one comment on the downtown Calus, I totally agree with Michelle on, and some other people, that that's, that should be put on hold for right now, because I've talked to a ton of stakeholders up and down McCullough, just so you guys know, and they have not been reached out by to, or anything by this Diggs Incorporated, they said they'd never heard of them, they haven't talked to them, they haven't asked them their opinion, and the last time I came to the meeting at the Parks and Rec here for, they had the, they were here giving their presentation, it's supposed to be for public outreach, there was four people in the audience, it was me, the mayor, and two council members, that